Broadcast has been.
Okay, the time is now five oh three P M. I call to order the November fourteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Good evening, and thank you all for being here today. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and member of the board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions of the committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff, then board staff, and finally, our board, a legal counsel, finally, but not least of all. So I will pass it to Vice Chair Walker to give us up.
Hi, everyone. I am Vice Chair Lolita E. Walker, excited to be here, member of the Policy and Governance Committee, and look forward to the work tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Miller, I think we can have you next.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Anita Miller, a member of this Policy and Governance Committee, and welcome.
Board Member Rivera Forbes.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Ramarara Forbes, and I am the student member of the board. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. I am currently at school as a student, and I'm excited to be a member of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Great. Board Staff.
Sorry. Hey, everyone. Cindy Adlin, Administrative Secretary, the Board Office.
Ms. Welsh.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance, and Procedures.
And Mr. Woodley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dennis Woodley III. I'm a partner at the law firm of Shipley and Horn, and we're a board counsel.
Great. And it looks like we have our other Dr. Miller, Dr. Zippor Miller, if you want to introduce yourself briefly before we get started.
Good evening. I am Dr. Zippor Miller. I am the Board Member for District Five.
Great. Thanks so much, everyone. So we'll move on to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. And before we move to the, to approve the agenda, I would like to inform the public that item four point five, Policy seventeen hundred Disabilities Issues Advisory Board was removed from the agenda to allow the administration to present to the Policy and Governance Committee a Special Education Citizen Advisory Committee Presentation. So may I have a motion to adopt the November fourteen two thousand twenty-three meeting agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda for the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in seconding to adopt the November fourteen two thousand twenty-three meeting agenda. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes, and the agenda is adopted. So we'll move to item one point four, Approval of the Committee Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the October seventeen two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes?
I move to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Right. It's been moved in seconding to approve the October seventeen, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes, the minutes are approved. So we now move on to item two point O, Public Comment on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. So there is one registered public comment speaker this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video or audio or written. And as far as it pertains to public, to the registered speakers, you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentations. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address the individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, C E O, Chair, Board Member, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. We will now hear public comment from our speakers on agenda and non-agenda items. Our speaker this evening is Ms. Tanya Wingfield, Citizens for Accountability and PGCPS Board of Education, Policy fifteen hundred ninety two fifty and Professional Development. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Wingfield.
Thank you. Comments that I have about Policy fifteen hundred is where it talks about each appointed member must be a parent or guardian of a currently enrolled student in the school system. But then you follow that up with two bullet points where it does give some leniency where you can say, where it says that a a parent whose child is in the twelfth grade can still serve two years, so it's conflicting. I think it needs to adhere to what you're saying the policy is. If it's a must, it's a must. And so, you know, maybe if that parent becomes ineligible, maybe they can move to a open community position if it's available. But I think you need to stick with that policy. For Professional Development, Paragraph B, where it states that members shall complete professional development, and then Paragraph C says members are encouraged to attend. So if it's mandatory, then it should be mandatory. Either it shall or it's optional. So that needs to be clear in the policy. Also, we would ask that the board respect the taxpayer dollars, especially with the looming shortfalls that we have coming at the state and the county level, and coordinate this training. So maybe it's part of your retreat instead of having board members doing separate things. So that way, we can ensure that members attend your retreats that you may have. We can ensure that all members get the same information. And and it's also going to reduce cost of our taxpayer, you know, of our taxpayer dollars. The other thing it said about the members that you should attend sessions based on your duties, but there is no policy out there that clearly describes what the duty is of of board members. There's one for Chair, Vice Chair, and Student Member, but nothing for the members. So that may be something that needs to be tightened. For Policy ninety-two fifty, Paragraph one B, where it says the board is, will hire an attorney, but it also infers that you will only pay the legal fees after the course of litigation, and if it's determined if that board member acted within the authority. So who's paying the attorney during all of this process? That's not really clear. Where you have defend in three A, an act protect protecting one's interests, but the, the this, the way this is described, it seems it's pretty open-ended that anybody can, on the board, can sue anybody because they can say, I am defending my interests. And then that last part where it says preventing and limiting liability, I guess when I think about the common law of reference to that, it does talk about a defendant. So if that can be clear. Three D, where it talks about litigation, where it really should make sure that it clarifies that board members, we have an administration administrative process that they can go through where they will be a defendant, or they'll be a respondent, and they should adhere to that process before going outside and filing a lawsuit. One last thing, I had submitted a comment in September, and I've been trying to schedule for a couple of times, a couple of months to get in, but I sent some comments regarding Policy ninety-three sixty that I had not really seen a difference in. But anyway, if I can just mention that really quick, on A, regular board meetings, there was a requirement where it said you had to have seven board members to consent to holding a special meeting, and I think that's going to make it almost impossible. So I would just say it needs to stay where it is. Also, the preparation of the agenda, based on what we saw happen in February, where the Chair just posted things with not enough time, to change this language and say that a, it may be posted at a reasonable time, I think that just gives, it opens up too wide of a door, so we don't have accountability. It needs to be specific like it is now, where we say it's within so many days. You have to give the public sufficient time so that we can look at the agenda and agenda items, and especially the documentation of things that you are going to discuss. I'm going to resend this because I think my time may be just about up. But I, and Ms. Welsh, I just want to thank you for the the work that you do. I attend these meetings, and I do think that you are doing an excellent job in getting things done for us.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Wingfield, and duly noted on your recommendations, and we appreciate you coming in this evening. So we're going to move on to item three point, or item three Legislative Updates and three point one, MAE legislative committee updates. So, Ms. Welsh, I actually defer to you. I know that you were at the most recent MAE committee meeting, and would love it if I can turn the floor over to you for now, while we're waiting for Mr. Fields, and then eventually, I will be the person that'll be helping out with that. But for now, if you have any updates, we'd, we'd love it.
Okay, I can share with you, MAE went through in detail lots of things related to their priorities, but I think that the most important thing is that they did talk a good amount of time about their top priorities for the two thousand twenty-four Legislative Session, and I'm just going to review those. And because this, I don't know if it's posted, Cindy, or not, but if it isn't, isn't, no, it isn't. We need to get this posted so that the public can see it also. But the main priorities that they talked about, and and actually is in line with where the board stands also, has to do with that they support governance authority of the local boards in education to adopt their own education policies and school system budgets reflecting local priorities and resources. So that's a big one that, and we're definitely in agreement with that because we want to make sure that we hold, that the Board of Education holds on to its authority as a Board of Education. The second one had to do with full state funding for Maryland's outstanding public schools, and making sure that the funding, the annual amount that we receive, school systems receive, is sufficient to cover all of the, especially the current and new statutory requirements. Number one, MAE definitely does not want to see unfunded mandates coming from the legislature, as well as the fact that with the, with the blueprint, there's a lot of requirements in the blueprint. Yet the funding, when you look at what the funding looks like in the years to come, it's going to gradually back off, and there's going to be a need for additional funding if, if in fact, they're going to hold school systems to the level of requirements that they currently have. Because there's no way that we can meet those requirements without that funding. So they, of course, so MAE is definitely supports funding. The other concern is the fact that the S R funds that we received, that when, when, when COVID was happening, and they picked up lots of costs for us, it picked up a lot of our digital costs, or you know, electronic devices for students, a lot of the interventions that we purchased and everything, that funding will be ending soon. So we'll be hitting a cliff there. So the combination of losing those S R dollars, as well as the fact that the blueprint isn't sufficiently funded, and we'll see a gradual reduction. That is a major concern for all the Boards of Ed for Maryland, and they are definitely advocating for that. The other thing is support for increased state funding for school construction and renovation projects. And that, again, is one of our, one of the main ones that the Board has also stated that we need, because we have a lot of, we have new schools that are being built, as well as we have a lot of schools that might not, are not being rebuilt per se, but there's a lot of construction work being done to those older schools that we need to have funding for. And then the last thing that they talked about was support for sustained and increased local government investments in education. And that comes from, that's, they're talking mainly about the funding coming from county government to support the public education for each of the school systems in the state. So those are the main four ones that they spent time discussing on Monday.
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Welsh. And just for for education purposes and for those accessibility purposes, I know you mentioned unfunded mandates. If you would love, if you'd like to clarify what that means for those that may not be clear, that may be helpful context.
So frequently, that bills will get, be passed that will require the school system to do something that's going to cost additional money, sometimes a good amount of additional money. And that requirement is not, no, there's not a fiscal note that comes with it to cover the cost of those requirements. And so the school system then is stuck attempting to try, either the county's going to have to pick up the funding to offset the cost for that requirement, or else, because there's only so much money, that means then you might have to pull money from another source in order to cover the cost of the meeting requirement. So as what is in our, the school systems legislative platform, as well as MAE's platform, is the fact that if you're going to require something, then you must fund it. It cannot be an unfunded mandate.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much for that. So I think we'll continue with updates here, but we're going to pass, I'd like to table three point two Blueprint Implementation Update until Mr. Phil gets here. If he has any additional pieces that he'd like to add, I think you briefly touched on blueprint funding and how that is impacted by MAE's legislative agenda. So we can move to item three point three Legislative Sessions, and I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Welsh.
At what I would like to share, the Board of Education did pass, voted on and passed on their legislative platform for this upcoming, coming to two thousand twenty-four Legislative Session, which is, which is, you know, excellent. They have all the information and all the different areas of what they will support if the legislation comes our way, as well as what they would oppose. So that's important, and I encourage the public to please read it because it says a lot about what the board's, you know, points of view are in terms of these areas, as well as I want to encourage, we have a legislative day scheduled for December fifteenth, of which the Prince George's County Public Schools delegates will be invited to that, as well as County Council and many other people within the county. But it's an opportunity, first of all, to showcase many of the wonderful things that are happening in Prince George's County Public Schools, and share that, that the money we do receive, we're using it, putting it to good use in providing, you know, different types of programs for students that really allow them to have options when they graduate from, from our school system. So, and so, and that will be at Deval High School, so on December fifteenth.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, for all of those updates. So we'll move on to items, item four, which is items for discussion. Colleagues, there are seven items for discussion, and we will follow the five-minute and three-minute discussion norms. So first up is item four point one, Policy Artificial Intelligence. I yield to the floor to Ms. Welsh to introduce her, her guest speakers and provide an update on the new policy, Artificial Intelligence. Ms. Welsh?
So I, I don't have any guest speakers for tonight. However, I am going for artificial intelligence. I would like to bring one for the next meeting. But I do have a draft of a policy that is, that we can discuss start the beginning of this discussion. And Cindy, if you don't mind putting it up, yes, thank you. I do want to first point out, I, to, to write this policy, I, I can't tell, I have a stack of papers I have read. I have read practically every article. And the one thing that is really outstanding is the fact that there are, there is, right now, our school systems, I think, across the country are sort of struggling to figure out how they're going to be using A I, and how are they also going to safeguard against some of the things that can impact our school systems. And so there's nothing really substant, there's a lot of information, but nothing that has been like consolidated to give you information about like policies that school systems should consider or whatever. So I also talked to Kimberly, Kimberly Rabeson, who is one of the directors in the, in our Information Technology Division, who has headed up like an advisory committee related to this and has probably a lot of information, and asked her if she'd be willing to come and talk at the next meeting. But in the meantime, I will share with you the information I did in putting together this policy. First of all, I, as far as the policy statement, the first two A and B actually do come from our strategic plan. And the reason I picked them up was, number one, the first one references providing education, meeting the goal of educational excellence with with a strategic imperative for a reimagining teaching and learning in non-traditional ways to meet and inspire the needs of our learners. And certainly, I, A I is one of those things that is definitely non-traditional and is a new way of, you know, inspiring students. But the second one, B, so we do have a language in our, a goal in our, in our strategic plan that has to do with our workforce. And so this references the power of organizational learning for improved creativity, enriched collaboration, system knowledge, system knowledge sharing, and operational efficiency workforce and operational excellence that can be achieved, and, and the board continually wants to move forward that, and that's listed in, in our policy or a strategic plan. And then C is the board recognizes that the use of artificial intelligence can, when used appropriately, can enhance student learning by improving the efficiency of education, providing new critical ways of supporting learning, and encouraging independent research, curiosity, critical thinking, and problem solving. So that's the whole policy statement. And then, if you move down to the purpose, I do want to share with you, which I did share with Board Member Fields, is that I believe that this policy really is, is, is in its infantile stage. And even if the board votes on it for this, you know, and approves it, as it goes through the process, that we consider looking at this almost on an annual basis right now, because so many things are happening in the world of A I. And as I started reading through all these different articles, research articles, I started to realize that anything that was older than twenty-two, like twenty-one, twenty nineteen, two thousand eighteen, I didn't bother reading anymore because that, because things have already moved forward. So it's like it's changing very quickly. But this does give the school system some guidance on things that need to be considered as we move forward this upcoming year in the implementation of A I. So the purpose of the policy is to provide guidelines for the introduction of A I with staff for productivity and instruction, and with students for instruction. Because it can be twofold. And one is definitely in our everyday work, even office work and everything, A I can be used to actually improve the efficiency and productivity of our staff, as well as for our teachers in terms of assisting them, not to take over teaching by any means, but to assist with some of the more administrative types of tasks that A I can help to pick up and, and ease their workload. And then, of course, for our students, it provides many different educational instructional opportunities. So the definition, the only definition I have here is A I, and it is, I'm going to read it because it does, this does really explain pretty much what A I is. It's a system of machine learning that is capable of performing complex and original tasks such as problem-solving, learning, reasoning, understanding, natural language, recognizing patterns in data. A I systems use algorithms, data, and computational power to simulate cognitive, and if you scroll down, functions and make autonomous decisions, enabling them to perform a wide range of tasks and improve their performance over time through learning and adaptation. And that really does pretty much explain what A I is. So that, as far as our standards, I think it is critical that they board basically have the superintendent basically establish a cross-functional joint working group that would include several divisions that would, in terms of creating a long-term professional application instructional guide regarding artificial intelligence. And the reason I say numerous divisions working together on this is because it does cross over so many divisions, and what the, what A I might mean for one, it could be very different for another. Certainly, for academics and for I T, part, well, a part of I T, it definitely, the applications are being used within the classroom and with our teachers. But then it does have impact for human resources because for different staff utilizing it, and the impact it might have on their job and their job responsibilities, as well as like accountability. That A I does have the ability to even do formative assessments, things like that. So I think it's going to be important for everyone to work together and pull all the information they can, they find and learn about so that we have a program that works well, that is effective, but at the same time is safe. So I'm going to take you down to the, what the work group should be addressing. First of all, and most importantly, that A I is used to align with the strategic framework, mission, and outcome goals. I mean, everything we do should be aligned to that. So that would be the first thing. The second thing has to do with privacy and data security. So I just, I'll give you examples. So the machines, so it's really bizarre, but machine, I was reading about this, and probably Board Member Briggs, you probably know more about this than I do, but when these machines are learning things, they're picking up like, 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 say, data from each of us, and then they're, so now they have access, there's a data that, that normally we wouldn't give access to anyone because it's secured by, like, FERPA for students and for employees' data, and HIPAA and things like that, what has this data, but that's how it's learning, and it keeps generating, then it has the ability to generate different decisions and stuff the machines do. But in the meantime, here, the machines have, have our data. So one of the things is to ensure that if we are using that in any capacity, and especially like with our students, that we have safeguards developed to protect the data, our students' data and their educational records. The second thing is notice an explanation of how A I is actually incorporated within each of the ed tech systems. So when you think about that, you really, in order for any of us to be able to inspect A I, to determine what it's doing and what's it incorporating, you really have to be able to understand the basis for the patterns and how they detect those patterns, but, and make recommendations. So it's not a simple thing, and that would probably be our I T office more than, than any group that would be responsible for ensuring that how is that, is, are these algorithms being, are the patterns being identified? Which then brings us to the next thing, algorithmic discrimination protections. So then they, so they have, they develop these algorithm, algorithms, which is sort of like, I think, sort of like rules that they apply to certain situations. But the problem is, the algorithms, whoever developed the algorithm is any of the, any bias that that person might have when they're developing the algorithm will absolutely show up in the A I that you're using. And I'll give you an example that sort of hit him with me. It's just a minor little example, and I can imagine you got a much worse examples. But in one of the things that the, that they were using A I, and it talked about doctors and nurses, and the entire time, they referenced doctors as he and nurses as she. So whoever developed that algorithmic rhythm to put that together, when their minds was thinking, and probably didn't, it's, it's the same thing with implicit bias for everything. They don't even realize they're doing it, but the fact is they're now saying, well, only men can be doctors and only women can be nurses. So then when students are exposed to things like that, that starts to formulate their thinking about what their potential and what their options are as, you know, as they get older. So it's really important that any A I that we, that we end up using, that we are, have really examined it very closely to ensure that none of those biases are showing up, and that the, the A I does promote fairness. And then, again, transparent and accountable, responsible use, that also involves making sure, like, our community, our families, everyone knows what we're doing and how we're using it, and ensuring that it's being used. It's not like you don't have a teacher just saying, here, we'll just have A I take care of everything and teach everything, that we are being very responsible for its use. And then, even though we might think A I is wonderful, there are times when really, it's really the need to use humans for certain things. So making sure that that's a consideration in the different areas that you would, you would consider moving forward with A I. So it's sort of the combination of all those factors that are important for the group, work group to be really focused on as they move forward in the usage, you know, moving out A I and having different people use it. The second, so then, as you move forward, Cindy, move, scroll down, please. So then, these are just some basic guidelines. So I, and I must say, there, I'm sure there's probably many other we can add at this point. There, you know, there's things, but these are just basic things that, that came to mind. First of all, the first one, of course, is that the use of a specific A I platform in the classroom requires that the A I system is vetted and approved by superintendent, the superintendent or designated. So we don't want people just automatically, like, teachers or whatever, saying, oh, I'm going to use this A I, I'm going to use that A I or whatever. I mean, we really have to have a regiment so that we're, know what we're providing. The other thing is, in certain situations, we want to make sure we receive parental consent before we actually offer certain types of A I services to students. The other thing is, A I must, the use of it must comply with all state and federal laws and regulations, including FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, which goes to the other thing I was talking about, as far as privacy and safeguarding students' records. The next one is, students will guide and monitor student use of A I, ensuring that it aligns with the board's policies and PGCPS administrative procedures. So again, it's not the teacher just saying, here, go ahead and use this, and you're not really paying attention to what, what the, what the A I might be doing, or what its potential could be for sharing our information, you know, sharing the students' information. And then, the next one had to do, staff should not solely rely on A I as a fact checker to confirm their work or research, as it may not always provide accurate or as it may not always provide accurate or up-to-date information. And that's true, not just like teachers doing their work, but any of us working. And if we were to rely on some type of AI site or something, it's not always that it's correct. So you, it's again, it still comes back to the human being being responsible and paying close attention to what they're using. And then the fact that inappropriate use of AI in which any board policy or administrative procedure or state, federal laws and regulations have been violated would result in disciplinary action. And that could, may result, I shouldn't say can, but may result in disciplinary action, depending what it might be as it relates to both staff and students. And then the implementation and responsibilities at this point is that the superintendent is required to develop an administrative procedure to implement this policy. So that, that is like our first rough draft of an AI policy. And I actually read through, I'm actually on this group thing that I, once a month, I have to sit through and all these school systems talk. And right now, there's, I don't, there's very few systems that have a policy. So we're sort of ahead of the game, you know, now we might be changing it in, in another year, but it's the beginning piece of it. So that's where we are right now.
Thanks so much, Ms. Welsh. I really appreciate that comprehensive presentation. So colleagues, the floor is now open for discussion and comments. And I will turn it over to Vice Chair Walker, whose hand I saw first.
Thank you. Hey, Ms. Welsh, that is so comprehensive. Thank you so much. PG is always leading the way for St. George's County, so I appreciate you. Ms. Welsh, I love that you added in the implicit bias. I'm gonna send you a research article that you can take a look at too for HR practices around AI. Yeah, yeah, I'll send that. I just talked that today in a class. But listen, I really wanted to make sure, I didn't hear you say the word supplement, but maybe we can write in there somewhere. Did you say supplement that AI is a supplemental tool to our teachers?
No, but you know what? That's a good idea. I will do that.
Yeah, because it goes with what you were talking about. It's not the primary tool in any classroom. This is a supplement. And I think that also, and I'll take a look at it and mark it up, but I think also we wanna just make sure we have training around this. And so we're educating our scholars at the same time because there's also aspects of plagiarism, for instance, and we want them to not get in the habit of, this is not their work, right? So thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Those are the two pieces I had. Thanks. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Hey, any other comments? Dr. Zepora Miller.
She's muted. Sorry. Thank you for recognizing me. I was trying to wait for the committee to respond, but this is an exciting time. And Ms. Welsh, thank you for being very comprehensive and bringing this together. So one is a question, and then the other is a comment. One was considering, I think I heard you say you're putting a work group together, might to understand, to look at this policy?
So what, what I put in the language was that the superintendent would put a work group, a functional work group together that would cross across different divisions so that they could start looking at how to implement and meet all the other criteria.
I, I wonder if, I don't, I don't wanna put this in, in the recommendation that you made, but I wonder if we should consider, as a work group is being chosen or being designed for this particular topic, to consider bringing in people from higher ed and also students to weigh in. They may not be the formal work group, but just to weigh in on how they use AI. And there's some things that we just don't know of, that they can give us input as we're making decisions about how to properly use this tool in education. I, I wanted to also end by saying, this, this has come full circle. In the medical field, I don't know if many of you remember, there used to be this career called the medical technician. And I remember when I went to college, I was trying to decide whether to be a doctor or medical technician. And at that time, things like pipetting was done by hand. Now it's done by a machine. I say that to say that, you know, things did work out. So while it seems foreign to us right now, I am encouraged that things will work out. I know it seems like it's so far off, but I remember at that time, it seemed so far off that a, a machine will be pipetting blood and other things that we have, but it's happening now and sequencing DNA. So we will be okay. I really believe we will be okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much for that comment. Okay, any other comments on this policy? I think, Ms. Mrs. Welsh, I, I will actually just say that I, one, again, really appreciate the presentation and the details. I do wanna say, and I think I already saw it in there, so this is just maybe more for the record versus inclusion, because I think you've included this in the policy. But as, as the, the law, is the law kind of evolves with AI? And right now, there's like a case that is before the Supreme Court, which could set some precedent around like how we think about, you know, a few different things, maybe section two thirty, for example, and like the implications that that has on states, us kind of keeping it loose. I think you've already mentioned this, right? State law needing to be kind of the bed, the foundation of how we're thinking about our policy so that as things change, we're in compliance and we're not like trying to like, you know, put out fires. And then the other piece I was gonna say was, I really liked the piece that Vice Chair Walker said around plagiarism. And I know that like a number of higher ed institutions have like actual technology that they use to make sure that students aren't plagiarizing, right? So as they submit information, they can just put it in there and they can see. So maybe we have something that's also vetted in this process so that we can have that as a standard tool that teachers and school staff can use to ensure that, you know, there is ethics in, in the, in the, the actual work product. So if there is, if there are no other comments, colleagues, I think we can, please let me know. Do you think we should move to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion? Given the sense that we should probably keep it for further discussion, but would love.
I think, I thought it was very comprehensive. And when you say keep it for discussion, I, I, I think it's, I think it's prepared, it's ready for first reader. If everybody's in agreement with Ms. Welsh adding those suggestions relative to the superintendent, superintendent, no, the supplemental tool, well, notifying that, that AI is a supplemental tool and the training aspect around the use of AI and the superintendent formulating a work group. And what, who should be included in that work group? Do we need to go into the weeds with that, Ms. Welsh?
No, you don't necessarily have to. You might want though, to, even if you're gonna get moved to action, you might still want to invite Kimberly Riverson to come and provide a little bit more information. I think it's always helpful to have knowledge about something like this because I, you know, sure enough, it'll probably land on your lap down the road for something that's happened. So it does help to, it just helps to have that knowledge. I will say that I do believe the administrative procedure is what's, where it's gonna need to be in great detail to cover all these things.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, are we ready to take, oh, I see two hands.
Okay, there's your hands, yeah. So I'll, I'll recognize student member of the board, Rivera Forbes first, and then Vice Chair, if you have anything, I'll turn to you.
Thank you. I first wanted to thank Ms. Welsh. This is definitely very thorough. However, I do think that possibly bringing it back one last time so we can review it, especially with the research that Vice Chair Walker talked about and also the person Ms. Welsh talked about coming in just to give a bit more background. I think that could assist because we can be just extra thorough in case something does fall on us in the future, especially with AI and how big it is and how much it requires.
Fair point.
And I'll just add in really quickly, I am, yeah, one of the things I was wondering is if in a provision in this one is that we, that the committee looks at this annually. The reason is because AI moves so quickly. I'd like to see a mandate for us to come back to this particular policy annually in order to modify it until we get to a place where AI is just gonna continue to, to move, especially in education. There's tools that come out every day. I think everybody's in alignment with that. If we can add that for the first reader, I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Great. So what I hear from everyone is, kind of seems like there's more of a leaning towards, let's keep it for further discussion. Let's bring it back. Let's have an additional special guest come and provide some additional context. And then we can move it for first reader. So Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendation made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on the new policy and bring them back to the next PNG meeting for further discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so the next policy is four point two, policy search and seizure. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on the new policy, search and seizure.
So Cindy, you mind showing it so we can go through it? If you can scroll down. So what I did was, I actually, as you'll see, I keep, keep going. Scroll down. What I did was I highlighted wherever I had made changes because, just because we had a lot of conversation around this the last time and I thought it might be easier than for us to follow. So one of the recommendations that Board Member Briggs had brought up about was the whole thing on reporting and monitoring and ensuring that we don't have, that we're looking at our demographics and then indicating, making sure we don't have disproportionality in the number of students who are being, not in the number, but the students who are being searched and that those who are not being searched and looking at it from that perspective. So in some of the language you had shared, Board Member Briggs, it really was like policy language. So I felt like the first piece where it talks about ensuring educational equity that reduces disproportionality in student achievement and performance, students' search and seizures along with demographic indicators should be tracked to ensure that systemic and cultural racism resulting in the presence of bias and the interpretation of reasonable suspicion doesn't occur. So I think it just seemed like it lent itself well to go into that part. But then if you go down further, you'll see where it talks about actually tracking it. So then if you scroll down, I think someone had asked about adding and the monitoring and tracking. Oh, that was you, Board Member Briggs, add, add, and the monitoring and tracking of searches. So that's for the purpose. I did put in the definition for law enforcement officers. And then if you get down further, keep scrolling. That was a missing word that I put in there. Before proceeding with the search, that was more, and I did add, okay, that's substantive. Go back right there. So originally I put gender identity and then Board Member Briggs also asked to have, or sex. So I didn't include that into that section when it talks about third party. And then if you move down a little bit further, Cindy, if you scroll down. And then this, okay, so parent notification. So what, so the conversation that came up at the last meeting had to do with, well, what if you're attempting to get a hold of the parent like on the day of the search, which ideally is what we want happen, but you can't seem to get a hold of the parent? Then how is the parent ever gonna have notice? And then how would they even have a right to, have a right to appeal something if they never had notice of the event? So I did add language that said, if the school is unable to contact the parent by phone, the school will email or mail a notice to the parent that a search or seizure took place. And then you'll go down further and you'll see about the appeal process. But before you go, wait, 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 before you go, we, so then the other thing had to do with police investigations involving questioning of students. So what I, this is really coming out of language related to, to an administrative procedure that we have that talks about the involvement of community agencies and law enforcement, social, CPS, the DSS, those groups. And so the language, and this actually comes from law, talks about the fact that if there's a police investigation, first of all, they, they cannot be, a student, they can't do an investigation, question a student on school promises that happened that unless it's in connection with a crime committed on school property or in connection with an investigation with, if it's not immediately permitted right away, would endanger the lives of safety of students, staff or persons. So the police can't just walk into our schools and say, we wanna, we wanna question this kid because something happened, you know, whatever. And then they start questioning the, the student. That, so the reason I think it's important to include the language that would endanger the lives or safety of students, staff or other persons is because the, right now, a big concern has to do with weapons in schools and the fact that other, with the metal detectors and students going through that and then that could call and question that they need to do, actually do a true search, not just go through the metal detectors. And because if they're truly suspecting that there might be, I mean, if they have a reasonable suspicion that the student might be carrying a gun or something, then of course, that we would want law enforcement involved. And then the school, the other thing is, law enforcement can never just question a student like by themselves. Take the student over to a room and start like police officers questioning a student. The school administrator has to be present throughout the entire questioning. And then if you move down a little bit further, I think there's a little bit more there. Yes, the, and then the school administrator should promptly advise the parent and the superintendent of the nature of the investigation. So I think you had asked a question about getting permission from this student, from the parent. And I didn't incorporate that, first of all, because there's no language about that in the law. But more importantly, it has, goes to the safety and security of our students and that if in fact, we are searching for a weapon, that, number one, there's no, sometimes we have to move fairly quickly. So you are gonna call the parent to let them know that the police officer is gonna question the student. But as far, number one, to even get permission from the parent when oftentimes we can't even get a hold of the parent, I think would cause some real concerns for the schools because they wouldn't be able to move forward in a situation where they might really need to get police support to work with the student. So I think, and the language we have in our administrative procedure also talks about a promptly advising the parent and the superintendent of the, a nature of the investigation. So I did incorporate that language that we have in the administrative procedure into this policy. So, and, and we can talk about it. I'm just letting you know what change I made. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, Cindy. And then, so then I also, back to the notice. So then as far as search and seizure took place, they have thirty calendar days, this is for appeal. Thirty calendar days of the dates that the search or seizure took place, as if in fact, they were able to contact the parent right that day or within calendar, thirty calendar days of the school emailing or mailing notice that a search or seizure took place. So that way, it takes into account, if they can't get a hold of the parent, they have a responsibility to get, send notice, written notice to the parent. And then that's when the clock would start ticking for the, for the parent to have the right to appeal. And then if you go a little bit further, and this, the training got out of alignment, but reporting, so that was the last thing. So the superintendent will make an annual report to the board, which will include trend data on the number of searches and seizures conducted. And this is really, I, I can't take credit for this. This is really Board Members Briggs, most, a lot of his language. The superintendent will make an annual report to the board, which will include trend data on the number of searches and seizures conducted by authorized searchers in the previous school year overall, as well as segregated by students' race, ethnicities, gender and disability. The annual report will also include data on the results of, and this is a little bit additional language I put in, results of appeals from students and their parents and guardians regarding the implementation of this policy. And then, and the accompanying administrative procedures, as well as data regarding the number and demographics of searches and seizures that were referred to law enforcement. So that way, then we can, we also know when law enforcement has been involved. And then you would see that data that would also be broken out by demographics that you could see how, you know, what, what was happening, what, you know. And I do wanna let you know that in the administrative procedure, I think I shared this the last time that I, one of the things I wanna have included in that is that every time there, a search is conducted, they have to complete a form. And that will make sure then that we can be able to collect this data because we would have that information, you know, all the time with these forms. But also what I think is really important is that if, if they see a pattern, which is gonna be in the administrative procedure where one student, every time they turn around is being searched, like over and over and over again, you gotta ask the question, what's going on? Why is this one student, especially if nothing ever comes up in the search? You know, that you, it makes you wonder, is there possibly maybe the student's being targeted or something? So at that, we'll call into question then what's happening, you know, on a student-by-student basis if in fact, it did appear like one student seemed to be, it seemed to. Instead, we'll have the data in front of us to tell us how frequently that student or how often that student was searched. And I think, hold on, Cindy, can you just scroll down the rest of the way? I think that's it. Yep, that's, those were all the changes.
Okay, the floor is now open for discussion and comments. I will recognize board members in the order of their raised hands. Um, Ms. Welsh, oh, great. Uh, looks like uh, we have student board member Rivera Forbes. I will turn it over to you.
Um, again, I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um, this is very thorough. I also like. The appeal process that was added and how it was also more detailed as well. I think it will be beneficial because there are cases where mistakes are made. And students feel that their right to appeal is needed. So thank you for including that. And everything else looks really well, just down to all the details in there.
Thanks. Um, I, I did wanna say, Ms. Welsh, that um, I'm not sure if you want to say anything back to uh, Board Member Rivera Forbes.
I, I actually said thank you, but I was muted. So, so thank you.
Oh, okay, great. Um, so I wanted to say that I appreciate it. I, I too really appreciate all the updates that you made. I think that they're great. Um, and the one piece that I maybe just have like a. A question about is the language for the appeal. So when it says um, the date of the incident or thirty days, uh, within thirty days of notice. I just want that to read as schools aren't sending out notices the day that the, that the event occurs because that's when they should be sending it out, right? I guess. It could happen on a Friday at five o'clock and they don't send it out until Monday. So there's like maybe that example of when that wouldn't happen, but otherwise I wouldn't want the language to kind of create a gap where it's like, oh, well, we just sent it out like a week after it happened. Um, I don't know if you feel that from your professional experience that that would be the case, but I wouldn't want the language to be tight so that there's no interpretation there.
So would you, would you like to see something that would say that um, notice would be um, mailed out within, I don't know, two business days of the event or something?
I definitely wanna have, yeah, that because the purpose of the language that I was suggesting was if you have a parent who said, let's say that, um, I'm just gonna make up a hypothetical, a parent whose number is often disconnected. And they may be hardworking parents and they, you know, care about the kids, but maybe their finances are right or whatever, maybe, right? And so they don't get notice of it until two weeks after. And um, I wouldn't wanna charge the parent and say like, well, now you've got fifteen days to respond because your phone is off or things like that. So I think what I was thinking was once they get the notice and they'd have thirty days, that may be too lenient. Um, but I don't wanna also within that gray area say. Within thirty days of notice, so that schools are interpreting it as, oh, well, we can send it out two weeks late, you know, or we can send it out a week later, uh, when they should be sending it out immediately. So I guess the two days could be um, helpful context, but that's the language that I was trying to get at in my.
I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying because if something comes like weeks after the effect, then parents probably aren't gonna, it's not gonna be as, you know, pressing because it didn't just happen. I do know that sometimes schools, especially high schools, are very busy bustling around and to ask them to send notice within twenty-four hours, I'm not certain they can always meet that requirement. So that's why I was thinking maybe two business day. And of course, you're right, if it falls on a Friday, chances are the notice would not be emailed or sent out until um, Monday.
Okay, so I think that's reasonable to have like the two days as maybe the update to that piece.
Okay.
Um, I will turn it to Dr. Zepor Miller.
Thank you. I just had a question about mail. Um, and I know that, you know. Mail, when I hear mail, I, I, I think of snail mail. Are you defining what mail means? Um, does it mean email? And or snail mail? Or I, I guess that was the question. Because if it's permissible to do it via email with some kind of return receipt, I don't even know whether that's possible. Then that would be reasonable to get to the parent in a timely manner, but I don't know what, how you're defining mail.
I just have, so I just have email and or postal, mail was just postal mail that would go through the postal system, but I do agree that. That mail is often snail mail because it's so slow and moving.
Because the, the snail mail, like, you know, after COVID, there used to be a time that you could predict within a day or two, you would get the mail, but now that's not even the case. Um, even though, you know, you are in your jurisdiction, it's not the case. So those notices would go, I don't know whether. You know, I don't wanna put in the policy to be so stringent as to say email and send it by snail mail, but I don't, you know, is there a word that you, a way that you could? At, you know, so that the parent can get adequate notice just in case that mail doesn't get to them on time.
Well, and, and I, I would say if the parent has email, they should go with email. Because there's a better chance that they're gonna be able to probably get it to the parent because you're correct about the postal mail. That's not always the case, but I don't know what you would do if the parent, I mean, I, I would think most parents do have email addresses. But I'm not gonna say that for every parent. I don't know that. And so that, but I'm not sure what else you could do if you weren't using the postal system.
Makes sense.
I mean, if you, if you notice something, tell me, I'll put it in. I just don't know what else there is.
I mean, there's, this, there's another option, but that option is not guaranteed, like sending the, the, the child home with the letters and then telling the parent to acknowledge receipt. There's no guarantee that that would get home. So, yeah, I think, I think we will stretch this one thin, but I was just trying to think of alternatives so that we can get to it. Because there's no even guarantee with a return receipt on email, because you may send it asking for a return receipt, but if you open it on your phone, it may not send the return receipt. So. I don't know whether um, our um, Mr. Whitley, how you handle things when attorneys have to get stuff to.
In the legal sphere, uh, it's kind of the, the honor system. You just uh, do uh, what's called a certificate of service, but what I was thinking is that in the administrative procedure, it may say that it's sent. Uh, receipt requested restricted delivery or receipt requested. That way there's a, a, a documented uh, history of when it was actually received by the parent.
Yeah, or I was thinking, uh, Ms. Welsh, like maybe an alternative is, it sounds like the issue we're trying to address is if they don't get the mail, right? Like you could have a number of factors. Someone moves recently, it's sent to their old address, like it's a COVID where. Mail was slow, people weren't getting their mail for whatever reason. So maybe there's just an extenuating circumstance where if the peel, if, if they are outside of that thirty day range, they can present. Some type of evidence to prove that they didn't get the information enough time, but they'd have to make a case for that. I guess it's appealable. Um, I don't know if there's any way to do that, but that, that might just be more, um, the better way of addressing it versus trying to predict every, or, or it could be what um, Mr. Willie said as well.
Maybe you can add the language for, for good cause shown, it can be extended past thirty days. I think is what Chairman Briggs was alluding, or Vice Chairman Briggs was alluding to something along those lines.
Okay.
Great. All right. So colleagues, should we move to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion? I think I have an idea, but um, would love to hear from my colleagues. I'm gonna say, I think after, after just hearing the discussion that we had, it might be good to have it back one more time for, for discussion. Um, hearing from Dr. Um, Zepor Miller, um, from student member Revor, Rivera Forbes. Um, it sounds like we wanna make some additional kind of uh, pieces as inclusions in the policy and then we can review it one more time before we move it to first reader. So. Um, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendation made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on the new policy and bring it back to the next Policy and Governance meeting. For further discussion. Um, we're now gonna move on to four point three, policy student use of social media in schools. I yield the floor to Ms. Mrs. Welsh to update us on the new policy, student use of social media in schools. Ms. Welsh, if you're talking, you are muted, so we can't hear you.
I'm talking, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, I, what I was saying is that we do have an administrative procedure uh, that talks about student use of social media and that actually, we've had that for probably since, I don't know, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. It's an older procedure, uh, administrative procedure. Um, so it's good that we now have a policy that will address it uh, and can drive the administrative procedure. So basically. Um, but the policy statement is saying that the board does recognize that social media is a viable tool to advance communication for students in the educational process and can be used in productive and innovative ways for instructional purposes. Um, but that also that board recognizes, acknowledges that safe, supportive, and effective learning environments depend on students demonstrating respect for themselves and others and using social media in a manner that will not detract from the learning process. So it's, it's twofold. And so that's the policy statement. And then this is just the purpose, which is to provide guidelines for appropriate contact when using social media. Um, and so then we have definitions. And if you just scroll down, Cindy, um, there's definitions for cyberbullying because that's always a concern with social media. Um, and then of course, the definition of electronic devices and then music misuse of social media, instead of listing out all the things that could possibly be and defining each one, I just put it under one main category, a misuse of social media. And if you. And it, it's, it's, part of it is like cyberbullying, but it's also um, being, you know, demeaning, you know, condescending, berating others. Um, uh, also in anything that might incite violence of any kind or embarrass a student, harassing, bullying. Um, any of the things that violates the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook when it talks about uh, students interacting with each other. So that's the misuse of social media, then school administration, which has to do with this principal and assistant principal, and then school property, which defines all of the buildings, land. Um, and our buses or school vehicles and any grounds which Prince George's County sponsored activities involve students. So the standards are that um, um, if you scroll down, Cindy. Uh, it, it says, first of all, that the superintendent designated may provide access to designated social media sites deemed appropriate for instructional purposes. Um, and on either computers, tablets, or even mobile devices. Uh, but that the superintendent may also discontinue that um, access um, or provide access to additional social media as necessary and appropriate, again, with the legitimate social instructional purposes driving the student use. Um, then all instructional programs utilizing social media must be aligned to curriculum standards, educational goals, and objectives of the lesson or unit of study. And then student misuse of social, social media and school property, which has a negative or severe impact on the school learning environment or risks of the safety of students and staff is prohibited. And shall be addressed through the Student Code of, uh, Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook. Then the other one, which is important to talk about is miss, student misuse of social media of school property in a way which creates an actual or potential threat to students, staff, or administration, or could. Reasonably be expected to materially interfere with the school environment is prohibited. Um, and should be addressed to the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook. So just to talk a minute about that one, um, they, um. There are, there's case law out there that talks about situations that have occurred outside of the school, off of school property, outside of the school environment. Of where either like really unbelievable nasty things were said about kids or pictures were sent or the, or there was like threats of violence or whatever. And because it was so bad, they, what was on social media, and when the students came onto school property, like say the next day, um, it really caused, uh, it was really a material interference to the true operation of the school. Which actually, and I think like there was one case, I think where a teacher. I, I, um, became, I was injured in the process because of inciting the, the violence based on what happened in social media. And therefore, um, they, the school was able to uh, discipline the student for the behavior that was the, for the social media behavior that happened outside of the school day and outside of school property. So that's just, that's important to realize. Um, the social media is sort of like, you can't get rid of it, you know, it's right there around you all the time. So. So it, and it can absolutely impact how school, students do when they're in school. So that's why it's important to include that. I did put language in this, says parents are strongly encouraged to monitor their child's use of social media outside of school. Um, which may impact child or others, their child or other students' educational opportunities. Um, then, um, it says students may not use, um, and this one's, even though the responsibility does fall on staff, that staff or not, and we have this in the social media policy or a. A administrative procedure for staff, we actually have it written a couple of different places. We also have it in four, two, one, nine, which talks about inappropriate interactions with students. And it's very clear that um, staff are not supposed to be communicating with students on personal social media. But what um, I did, I actually picked this up off another school system's policy because I thought it's important for students. Um, letting them know that they shouldn't be involved in social media communication with staff unless it's specifically related to um, that the school administration has said, yes, this is what you're gonna do. Or like, we have certain apps that allow for communication with students and those are approved. So then that's fine. But personal communication back and forth with, with, between student and staff on any type of social media is absolutely not allowed. It's, 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 it walks us down the road. Um, some very serious problems of crossing the professional line, you know, distance for uh, between staff and students. So that's why I incorporated that. And if students know it, there's a chance they might not do it, or else they'll report it, which is important. And then if you scroll down a little bit further. Cindy, um, um, and staff are also, if they become aware of any misuse of social media, they are supposed to report it, um, students misuse. And also students are encouraged to report the misuse of social media to school administration. Uh, even, and that's what I was gonna say, including communications or invitations to communicate with staff members over social media. So clearly. Uh, it's very important for students, like if a teacher or something tried to communicate with a student. Um, personally through personal social media sites, that that student did inform administration. Or their parents who could then inform administration, but making, you know, the school system aware of what had happened. So that's, that is basically it in a nutshell as far as student use of social media.
Hey, um, so the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Um, and again, I will recognize hands in the order that they're raised. Student member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. Um, I just had a quick question, Ms. Welsh, about the overall purpose of this policy. I understand um, some of the goals it has, but what exactly are we putting it in place for?
Mainly, um, probably mainly because of um, things like cyberbullying, I'm guessing cyberbullying and I'm, just so you know, I don't necessarily, necessarily pick the policies, but I'm just saying, I think it was put in place for instance of. Uh, cyberbullying between students, um, or um. Just negative, I guess, negative in communications that might occur between uh, stu- students, um, you know, when they're in school, not when they're in school, but in, in general, just between students.
Okay, thank you. I understand it.
Are there any other questions, comments?
That's all for me.
All right, I'm gonna go to Mr. Willie first and then I'll come to myself.
I'm gonna recommend that we send the policy to our uh, class action council, uh, so that they can review it to just make sure it doesn't interfere with uh, other actions that the board has voted to, to move forward with.
So Ms. Welsh, um, I had a, when you were talking about, I think it was um, G or H around the uh. The teachers having uh, access to students through social media. And I was thinking about um, something like WhatsApp, because I know that WhatsApp is technically kind of like a social media um, platform, but you know, I could see something like a field trip, like. You have high schoolers and the teacher's like, hey, just put your number in here, we'll group chat each other, you know, um, you know, we're gonna be back at the museum, right? That would be an example where a teacher would really need to know if you did something like that, you'd be out of the policy because that's a social media platform. Um, if you were messaging a student directly or if they had access to you in that way, um, that may be inappropriate. So I, I'm wondering if maybe it's also helpful to just have like a few examples. Of policies that may not be, you know, typical, right? We know Facebook, we know Instagram, but you may not be thinking of, of a WhatsApp. As I fall into that category, just so that we're helping folks to understand what we're talking about and how, you know. As I fall into that category, just so that we're helping folks to understand what we're talking about and how, you know, extensive this policy is. The only other thing I was gonna say was with the cell phone policy, I know we probably have a policy for cell phone use in the school district. And I feel like this should probably, well, I'll pause there and see, do we have a policy for cell phone use in the district?
So actually, that is another policy that's coming up for tonight that we had and it was up for revision, but I did have a question in the work plan. I said. Is there a possibility that we might want to condense the two, put them together? And but I didn't take that, I take the liberty to do it because we really haven't had the conversation and it didn't hurt to put the policy for social media together because then if we do put it together, it's just a matter of putting it together.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So I appreciate you saying that. I recognize Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you so much. That's actually what I was gonna say about the two policies because they are likened and then the the other piece. I look forward to reading it because I didn't hear all of it, but I was, Mr. Briggs, were you. Saying that WhatsApp. Just to add that as another platform or were you saying that it should be used? No, not it should be used, right? Oh, yes, it should be used or no, it should not be.
No, it should not be used.
Oh, perfect. I'm in alignment. I was like, is he saying we should be, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much and. I would like to say that I believe if we don't already have it, maybe something to that point of if you wanna field trip and you need to keep in touch. We maybe we should investigate if there is a tool, whether it's class dojo or something that we can have group. Communications that are school approved that we already have. So that for something like that, I hadn't thought about school trips, but something like that I can see in high school, where are you? You're gonna be here at five o'clock or whatever the case may be. So those are the only two things I had at this point. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
And I'm sorry, but I did want to let you know, we do have an administrative procedure four two one nine and it specifically addresses that. Where there are specifically approved apps like class dojos, one of them, I'd have to go back and look at the ones they listed. That absolutely they can use that that for like. You know, when you're on a class trip or something and you know, say, high school students and they're going different places. Now you're saying, come on, we got it, we're getting ready for the bus or whatever. And you bring the kids back, but that's an approved app that we currently have.
Perfect, perfect. You don't have to look it up, Ms. Welsh, we can just cite it one there, you know, please refer to, yeah, perfect, thank you. For approved communication tools.
Okay.
Good point. All right, I'm gonna student member Rivera Forbes, I'm gonna go to Doctor's emailer first since you've spoken and then coming back to you.
Sorry, I lowered my hand.
Great, Rivera Forbes.
I was just gonna add in. Just field trip wise, because I did hear that as a discussion. I've never heard of class dojo being used. So if there is a possibility, we could still look into a form of communication. I think that would be great, especially with this policy being updated in case there are any people using. WhatsApp or any other apps currently. It might be something good that we can look into.
Great. Doctor Zapor Miller.
I'm going back and forth of this, don't want to throw a monkey wrench, but I don't know if any of you have been in a situation where. A wifi platform for communication is inaccessible. And I don't know whether. As you are talking about field trips, particularly, it's generally with high school students, it's not with elementary or middle, whether we can make. And I don't know what they would be, but thinking about making provisions for when it is acceptable. To do a group text with, and I don't know whether it's add the principal to the group text when you're doing this, even though they're not around. I don't know. When they're in a situation where they've gone to a place where wifi is just. Not working as a means for communication.
Okay.
And Dr. Miller, I'm gonna say this to you because I just don't know if you're aware, you may be completely fine, but we're only seeing from like the nose up. So just so you you know that we weren't saying, I don't know if you did that matter to you. So colleagues, it sounds like if there are no other comments, should we move to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion? Ms. Welsh, I think I'm getting the sense that again, this is another one where we should probably keep a further discussion. So Ms. Welsh, please take under. Yeah. No, no problem at all. Please take under advisement the recommendation made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on the new policy and bring them back to the next Policy and Governance meeting for further discussion. So we're gonna move on to. Item four point four, policy fifteen hundred, parent and community advisory council. Colleagues, we are pleased to have, and I don't see her in the room. So she may be joining Cindy, let me know, Ms. Dolores Millhouse, the P C A C committee chair. This evening, I'm not sure if she's still planning to do it or not. It looks like she's okay, she's in queue. So. And and she's gonna look at us this evening to discuss and take questions regarding policy fifteen hundred. So I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to update us on policy fifteen hundred, parent and community advisory council.
Okay, Cindy, can you post it for me, please? Okay, if you could scroll down. This is these are just previous language changes. So there was a request, can you follow, go back up for one second, please? There was a request for having a definition and I'm not sure what happened to these definitions, they moved around, but for B. The question, the the definition of liaison. So I did put that language in that they they are individuals designated by the board and the superintendent, whose primary responsibility is to provide information to and from the P C A C and the board. The superintendent and students to establish and maintain communication for mutual understanding and cooperation between the P C A C and. If you'll scroll down Cindy. And the board, the superintendent and students. So I put that definition for liaison. We had previously collective advises the board and the superintendent. The number two, that was also. Language that we had previously, the part that says reflecting geographic, racial, ethnic, cultural, cultural and gender diversity was added because in. House Board Bill ten seventy nine from last year, they did incorporate that language into that bill. And then if you scroll down further. Okay, so the first thing is the language that I put two bullets and the reason I put them in is because when I went back and listened to our tape. We basically had two two different opinions about this and so I put language in to address both opinions. And with the idea that at this meeting, a decision can be made on where we're going with it. So the one, the first one I put in said. That if a parent or guardian of a twelfth grade student is appointed, the term of that appointment will be for one year or until the student graduates. Then the second language I put in there was a member of a if a or if a member who is appointed at the time when their child is in twelfth grade will be allowed to complete the two year term. So it's a it's a decision that the committee really does need to come to as far as. Do you wanna, do you want to either just give them one year or two years if their child happens to be a twelfth grader? And then I'll just delete whatever you decide you don't want. I said, okay, and then let's keep going down so I can keep adding. Then it says I added, if any of the above appointed members positions become vacant anytime during the year, the board will advertise that vacancy no later than one month of being notified of the vacancy. Upon receipt and review of the submitted applications, the board shall appoint a member recommended by the superintendent to fill the vacancy. Then the next thing I added was by April one, because last last meeting, there was conversation about having a deadline for filling vacancies for the following school year. When especially when you know terms are coming up, coming up and it's the end of a two year term for someone. By April one of each school year vacancies in the P C A C for the upcoming school year will be advertised and applications will be made available for anyone interested in applying. For one of the above positions on on the P C A C with review and appointment process will be completed by the superintendent and the board members no later than June first of each year. Now, there was conversation, some people thought there should be staggering terms and then if I recall, I remember board member Fields said. But there is value in having a cohort of members because then you've been working together all this time. So again, that's one that. There needs to be, you know, agreement within the committee on how you want to do it. And then the next thing, their next question had to do with. Instead of requiring the student board member to be a member of P C A C, what it says is that if the. That will designate a board member and ask the student board member if they would like to be a member of the P C A C. If the student member indicates that they would like to be a member. Then the student board member or a PG CPS student who is a member of the student advisory committee selected by the student member. To serve as an alternative when the student member is unable to attend a meeting, attend a P C A C meeting, will serve as a liaison to the P C A C. So it's in that language, I was tempting to address the concern. That our student board member said in terms of not requiring it, but definitely giving them the opportunity to if they would like to, but then even if they do agree. To be on it, there may be times when they absolutely cannot attend a P C A C meeting. And so then if they had someone they designated as sort of their alternate. That was a member of the student advisory committee, then that person could come to P C A C instead of the student board member. So that was that language and then. The other thing I included was languages said the by, which was again, a recommendation by someone, the bylaw shall define what is required of a P C A C member to be in good standing. And the process to remove a member when is determined that they are not in good standing. So that would be incorporated into the P C A C's bylaws. And then if you proceed further Cindy. Okay, and then it says, and I think we talked about this the last time, the board, instead of having generic language, it just sort of says the. P C A C will advise the the board and the superintendent. It says the board and the superintendent will consult regularly. But not less than quarterly with the parent community advisory council and may meet more frequently by mutual agreement. And that says prior to the first, this was a recommendation from the last meeting, prior to the first board meeting of the school year. The board and the superintendent will meet with the P C A C to receive input regarding the development of the annual performance goals of the board and Prince George's County Public Schools. Because if you recall, House Bill ten seventy nine now has language in it that says that the Board of Education and the superintendent will work together to establish. Goals. So this is an opportunity for P C A C to give input as the as the superintendent and the board goes about developing their goals. So then if you proceed further down, I might be the last one. Cindy, if you can keep going down a minute.
That's it. So those were all the changes. So I hope I got everything. I did listen to the video and I think you have two items that probably. There should be some conversation about.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh, for that. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. I will recognize. Board members first in the order of their hands and then I will recognize our our guest this evening. Vice Chair Walker.
Hey there, thank you so very much. I'm trying to put down my hand. Yes, thank you, Ms. Welsh, again for pulling all of that information together and for watching the video. A couple of key points, I am in alignment for the student board member not to be required. Even as a liaison, I thought we talked that last time as well, but I'm I'm sure I was the one that. Mentioned that I didn't think that it should be a requirement. Just given all of the other responsibilities that our our student board member has and acclamation. So thank you for adding that in. I am looking forward to voting tonight. I think one of the other pieces is I thought you did a great job. Of letting us know last time, I thought that you were clear on what the superintendent's recommendations were versus. The board member recommendations or P C A C members, but somehow between then and and now I was told that. It's not the superintendent's recommendation, it actually is the board's recommendation and that's not what I thought I understood. So I just want to be really clear inside of the documentation. What whose responsibility is it to make recommendations for P C A C members when there's an open seat? That's one thing. Well, don't answer now because I got a couple of things and before I forget, only because I'm driving. The other thing that I wanted to add was. If we if we agree on who is gonna be inside of the role, then that means that they fit the qualifications now. So if a twelfth grader, I'm sorry, if a parent of a twelfth grader. Is said to start their term now and we know that it's a two year term, we already know early on that they will only be able to serve one term. And that's okay if we say yes, but because we know that, I think then they will be in noncompliance in a year, therefore our process will. Find a replacement for that particular person. And so I think that's what you said as well. I just wanted to make sure that if we say yes, knowing that compliance or in good standing, which is the words that we said. Means that one of the requirements to be in good standing is that you have a child that is currently a student within PG CPS. Then we know that no matter when, whether it's six months, a year or a year and a half, that you will be out of compliance. If you are not on this, then that is what is the trigger for us to then begin the process again. Just want to make sure that that's very clear too. Thank you. And you know, as I was just thinking about. I think that because we only have two minutes and twenty seconds and so I'd love for you to be able to respond in that timeframe.
So the superintendent, the way the language reads right now, it is the superintendent who does review them first, makes a recommendation based on the recommendation, then the board members select. For the the member from each of their districts. That's the language that it reads. I mean, if that is not what you want, then that's something that you can certainly make a change to that language that, you know, that was that is. And I did double check with O G C just to check to see if their interpretation was the same as mine as far as. The fact that it was the superintendent's responsibility to make the recommendation first and then the board members would then do the selecting of their of whoever it was that would represent their district. And they did, that's exactly how they also interpreted the current language. So. I mean, that's a decision again, the committee can make if they want to change that. As your second question had to do with good standing, so I gave you two options. One is. The person comes for one year, their child's in twelfth grade and they and at the end of twelfth grade, they leave, but they're leaving. They're they're, I mean, I hate saying they're not in good standing because they they didn't do anything wrong, but it's sort of like understood from the beginning of their term that they just have one year term because their child gets out of school at the end of that year. If in fact the student graduates. But if but the other one was, I think there was some people had expressed a concern over, well, couldn't they just finish out that term because they started in a good standing? And and there's child, their child was in school in our school system. So whichever one you all decide is fine with me, I'll just delete the other one. So I think that was the answer.
Let me use my, thank you for answering. So let me use my remaining seconds to say, I am only in alignment with. The one that is to carry out their term, not if they join, knowing that their child is gonna be there for three months and then all of a sudden gets to to serve two terms. I'm not in alignment with that. What I'm in alignment with is that we are very clear that this is a two year term or whatever the term is. And then as we say yes to people that they have to self-report on when their child will no longer be. A a member of PG CPS and that is what triggers us to find another replacement. This is a parent organization and so I will vote for it to be remain a parent organization. The second piece is we were not in compliant with what our documents actually say. Now you were extremely clear, but that's not what we did. Now, mind you, the board has already voted and I'm not looking to go back on that vote. But our superintendent gave us names and recommendations based on what you clearly told us in our meeting and other names were presented to us. And while every board member, while the supporting board member actually said that they were in alignment with it. And our board voted favorably, I just want to make sure that we we are the policy and governance committee. We have to follow policy and governance. And we need to do that ourselves as well. Ms. Welsh was very clear in our last meeting. So those are the only things. My time has run out. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Walker. I'm gonna turn it to student member of the board, Rivera Forbes.
Thank you, Vice, I mean, yes, Vice Chair Briggs, my apologies. Uh, thank you, Ms. Welsh. I definitely like the updates that were added, especially for the student member of the board role. I can say now. It's definitely a heavy position to carry at a young age and it does require a lot of dedication and time, which I believe students are able to fulfill, but it also helps if we are given a choice. And some of the capacities we can perform in. So I love this, especially since I had a choice to join as the P C A C co liaison. One, just riding discrepancy I saw is that it says student advisory council, however, it is the S M O B advisory council. So I would just put that there since, yes, just not nothing too big, but it is called the S M O B advisory council.
Thank you.
So besides that, thank you so much.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much, Board Member Rivera Forbes. And Ms. Welsh, I'll really quickly kind of add just a few pieces and then want to turn it over to Ms. Brit Millhouse, who's here this evening. So I just want to say that I also appreciate. Um. So I just want to say that um I also appreciate all the updates that you've made to the policy. Um. It looks, you know, i- it it looks like what we have all requested, which is what we want, and it's piecing together well. Um. I do want to say that there are two pieces that I um wanted to one clarify. And I want to just make sure that we're on the same page here because the way I read the policy for that first section for the not for the nine board members that represent the districts was that it said the headline was that the board um and the superintendent will work together and make appointments. Um. And then it goes into kind of, as as you know, it breaks it into sections and it mentions that for each of the districts, it talks about the board member that represent represents that district making the appointment. Um. For B, it talks about the board for uh the faith base, the union and the community um positions, those are actually based on a full board vote. So that's not a appointment by either. And then for the um superintendent appointments, those are for school level administrators or uh um, you know, other others that are working for the superintendent. So just can you clarify for us the policy? Because as I read it broken apart, it sounded like the districts are explicitly for the board members that represent the district to make the appointment.
So it's based on the language that's currently there. It's actually based and and you know what? I I'm going to tell you what, I I interpreted it as well as what OGC interpreted, but we also have Dennis here. So I would say since he is board counsel, he should give his interpretation. So reading the language, I and what OGC also said, we we see it as the superintendent is making the recommendations and then everyone under all the other positions are filled based on those recommendations that are provided by a superintendent. Um. So I don't know, Dennis, you might think of read it differently.
I agree totally that it's a recommendation, but the board member makes this uh the superintendent has a recommendation, but the board member makes the final call.
I see. So just for clarity's sake, so I guess in process, I'm thinking about that. So is it like there's a pool of candidates? It said we got twenty-five candidates that apply, right? Um. Or let's just make the math easy. So it's like ninety candidates that apply for the nine districts. And the board members are going to see all ninety candidates. But the board member for District Five is going to see the ten candidates that apply. Is the superintendent making a recommendation of those ten candidates that he thinks is best? And then the board member still choosing the person that they think is the best fit based on the qual- the the recommendation from the superintendent? It just feels it's, I guess, to me, it seems like it it would al- almost cancel out because if the superintendent is making a recommendation on the ten, then and the board member is still choosing the person that they are selecting, then I guess that was where I was missing uh reading that policy to kind of see like it's really just the board member that's making the appointment. But clear, I'm happy. I just want to clarify so that we are all on the same page about ways we can strengthen the language if it's interpret if the interpretation is odd. Um. Or um if maybe it's just there are some other challenges there.
The way I see it is that the superintendent is vetting the candidates for the board member because the superintendent would have more resources and 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 more time than the board member. But I think that the board member would make the ultimate call. That that's
So in that scenario, the board member was still, the board member would still see the ten, but they would see the recommendation of that ten. Maybe there's like two that the superintendent finds most ideal, but they still select out of the ten, the person that they think is best fit.
Defer to uh board member um to 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 Ms. Welsh because I don't know the inner workings of the administration.
Okay.
So I could, so let's just say that there's ten ten um applicants for your district. Superintendent reads over the ten applicants and he thinks five of those ten he would recommend uh could be definitely a member for PCCAC. Then you, as the the person representing that district, would then choose from the five that he is recommending. But I do think you bring up a good point where I don't, what you're saying makes me think of something is that the superintendent, though, we don't want him just to make one recommendation, like for one person. If in fact, there might be, it's not like who is the absolute best. It might be that of those ten, five are, you know, are really good, you know? So he uh I ideally, we would want him to provide you the recommendation of any of the ones out of the ones that apply that would be he that could be a good candidate for PCCAC.
Yeah, because that was my thing. I know we were having two discussions too, which was around like making sure that everyone saw all the candidates and had access to that information to select. So if if the board member were saying, oh, these five are recommended by the superintendent, but I actually want to go with that seventh person who seems really good to me for District Two, then I I'm wondering how that will how that would fit. Uh. Unless I'm coming up with my time, but I just want to say that I really appreciate again the piece. I'll maybe have a second round. I do want to make sure we have enough time for uh Ms. Britt Millhouse. Um. So Vice Chair Walker, I'll go to you and then hopefully we can get to um Britt Millhouse for her her comments and questions.
Oh, yes. If there's a time constraint, I'll just go ahead and let Ms. Millhouse um talk and then I can come back afterwards. No worries. That's just fine.
Okay, great. All right. So I'll uh turn it over to Ms. uh Britt Millhouse for questions and comments.
So I'm I thank you for this time and and I appreciate the lively discussion about um you getting a better understanding of the recommendation from the superintendent and what you chose to do as a board member to submit your own recommendation. But as we move forward for this policy, I think it's very clear. And Robin, thank you for taking a lot of the comments that were submitted in uh with the PCCAC recommendation report. But I I want to make a couple of comments. When you are, a question first, when you mentioned the student and you define that, um as we discussed or a PCCAC meeting, the students have P-grass. And so I don't know if this is a discussion around the student as a liaison or the student as a member of the Parent and Community Advisory Council. Um. And so there is some concern about the student being a part of the Parent and Community Advisory Council. Um. They have the P-grass group. We, as we stated, we will work very collectively with all departments and all groups. But this is for parents, primarily for parents, and then as well as the broader um group for the community to be a part of. Um. But we are looking to make sure that the parents' voices are heard in a space where we can collectively collaborate. Um. So you can respond to that, I guess, at a later time. Then when you talked about the twelfth grade, um the parent who has a child in the twelfth grade, if you all could look at it from this perspective of um the parent whose child is in the twelfth grade, whose child then graduates, still has so much value to add. Um. My concerns in the beginning of making sure that we were in compliance to the policy is not about an individual because they're not a parent. They have been a part of the system. These are individuals who were on the committee before, who did not have students in the schoolhouse or had a child who had graduated three or so years prior to them even coming on PCCAC. What you all are discussing here is if an individual is a parent who is in the twelfth grade year, the child then graduates, there is still some value to be added because we are operating and supporting you all as an advisory council. So there may be some policies that come up as it relates to graduation. There may be some policies that come up that that talk about, you know, um the college readiness, wha- whatever it could be, that parent could still add value. So I my two cents to that is if you also elected individual who has a twelfth grader who was then graduating that year, then allow them to complete the term because you all have elected this individual because there was some value added. We are not in agreement with when you are putting individuals in the seat as a parent member who do not have a child in the school system. When you also spoke about um the the back to the who's responsible to recommend, just make it clear. Because I let my third grader, as well as my eighth grader, read the policy without any interference about what they should be understanding about it. And they were both very clear about what it stated and who was supposed to recommend what. So I don't know if you need to change the language a little bit to, you know, make it um an appropriate level for you all to understand, but the the language just needs to be simple. Who is going to recommend? What does that look like? And does that recommendation also include that you then, once it gets to the board liaison, because I'm assuming that that would go to the board liaison, that then they would have to operate with full integrity to submit the entire list from the superintendent as well as what other recommendations? And then to justify to the public why they decided to go with those candidates. Because it's not very clear in the process and what's happening, how are people being selected. Um. You all had also spoke about, and I see the comment in there, to have the date, you know, individuals being voted in by June first. I would recommend pushing that back. If the term ends June um thirtieth, then you need to have some transition time for the the current committee to be able to support the transition of the new committee. So if they're coming in in May, well, they get appointed in May, they start serving actually in July, that at least gives them some time to come onto some of the meetings, be there, not be able to operate as part of the panel. But they will be able to see and understand what's happening, and then we can have time for a transition meeting. Because you do it in June, we're coming up at the end of the term, and then we're also now being bumped against what we have to do with our own students and our all personal time. So look at pushing it back. But I do appreciate the tilingness of when there is a vacancy that the board is stating that at least within thirty days, the movement will start happening to then begin to identify to appoint new members. And so that's all I have that I wrote down at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. uh Britt Millhouse. And I will turn to you, Ms. Welsh, to give a response before I go to Board Member Rivera Forbes.
So I just wanted to say that um um first of all, that is, I'm glad you picked that up about the student board member. It was not that the the student board member would be a member. It's actually that the student board member, if they would like to be a um a liaison, a student board member liaison to the PCCAC, which is what uh just um which is what the role is that she's playing right now. So I think that's what I need to put liaison in there versus member of the PCCAC. Um, because I think board member Briggs is that not correct? The student board member is of is is like a co-liaison or with you.
Yeah, the first of of yeah, that this year.
So I will change that language. Um. And then the other thing, as we can push that uh back, if you think like May first would be better to to um identify for when the um when they, when the selections are done by May first, we can do that.
Uh huh. Yeah, it it just gives us times because once you all appoint the individuals, then there needs to be a transition period. And um it allows us to at least transition them in and people to say, okay, hey, my term is up, you know, you all figure it out. We don't want that to happen. So we want some continuity. And um when one committee comes into place to transition. And and I and I do appreciate the fact of being a cohort because the terms are very short. We're trying to do a lot of work in that time. Um. And so staggering would be great, yes, but it the if we're not having the time to meet with the board as a collective, and that's the other question. When it says the board, is that the board liaison that we're meeting with, the board in its entirety? Is it board leadership? Wha- what does that mean when you say the board and the superintendent will meet with? Like, who's included in that definition of the board?
Okay, well, no, I I well, Ms. Welsh, and you may, there may just be, it sounds like that's maybe more of a comment to um include uh be more explicit in the language. Um. And so I think that we'll duly note that. And then Ms. Britten Millhouse, we're happy, I'm happy to come back. So I want to make sure we get enough people to um share additional comments. And then as um if you have others, then um I'll I'll come back to you. Um. So I'm going to go to student member um of the board, Rivera Forbes.
Thank you. Um. I would like to clarify that the um student member of the board role um also from my perspective is not to be a member of PCCAC and also not to take away um the role that the parent members play because it is important that the parents also have a place to discuss and advise the board as well. So that's definitely important. The uh goal to ha- for the student member of the board to have a person that can sit in their place is to ensure that wha- from what PCCAC did request, the student viewpoint is always included and that the student is always involved. So when I can't be there with and the future student member of the board with all the other duties that we have, there is still a student there outside of me that can assist as well, but not as a member, just as a liaison to help liaise. And that's the number one goal because, like I said, we do not want to take away the place that parents need to advocate as well. So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Great. Thank you so much, Board Member Rivera Forbes. I'll recognize myself just really quickly and say that I do want to also include um that as we're talking about language around a cohort and um and making sure that we have the the continuity that we're really thinking about this. I mean, if we can be as comprehensive with this policy as possible, I think that's the best thing we can do. So something that I was thinking was if we're ending, if we hypothetically have everyone ending their term for twenty twenty-four, and we start an application process for nine districts and the union and, you know, the commu- uh the community pro uh right, that those are a lot of people. And we and we get a lot of, I mean, just me being in this position for the short amount of time that I've been in it, there's a lot of pushback. People want a robust process. They want to make sure we have enough applicants. And so I feel like one from April one to May one um to have like, you know, a a robust selection is a pretty tall order um for the board to do that as well as for the administration to do that, for the superintendent to review hundreds likely of a- of applications or at least, you know, in the fifties. Um. But then in addition to that, I think that we also don't have any continuity when we think about the transition. So when you think about onboarding or when you think about um the kind of collective knowledge that the PCCAC has built up, if everyone's leaving at the same time, then who's there to really kind of understand the process? You know, how the meetings will function, all those things. So I do want us to make sure that we're having that as kind of consideration too. Um. Because I do think that that's going to be something that we'll likely bump into is everyone's leaving, everyone's fresh and new. Um. And we're kind of all starting at the same point and trying to figure things out. And it may just put a lot of uh responsibility on one side or another. Um. I am going to go to um uh Vice Chair Walker first and then Ms. Britten Millhouse, I'm going to come to you. Want to make sure I'm recognizing in following process.
Okay, thank you so much. Um. Sorry, I couldn't get my hand up fast enough. Listen, the um the piece that I just wanted to talk on um was this notion of what Ms. Millhouse talked about. If we do say that you can come on in twelfth grade knowing full well that you will only be able to serve one term, if this board says that then we know that they're going to be out, I I I just wanted her to say that one more time when it's her opportunity. Because I know I do believe that there's value in a twelfth grade parent being on. I just didn't understand if you said that then you think that they should fulfill their whole term, like not be a parent of a child once, like for a whole year? Because then I think that takes us out of policy. So I just wanted to better understand. Um. I think I missed just a little piece of that. Thanks, Ms. Millhouse.
Okay, uh well, I will go to um Ms. Britten Mills um for
Oh, yeah, because she working on my two minutes, right? Answering my question. I had two minutes and seventeen seconds. Come on, Ms. Millhouse.
Okay, just real quick. So what I was saying is allow that person to complete the term. And so it really is not about no longer not being in com- in compliance because you just need to add the language in the policy itself that states that even if one of those individuals that are appointed to the seat has a twelfth grade student, then they will be allowed to complete the term. The policy just needs to add to change that.
Yeah, but the term would mean two-year term, but they would no longer have a student in after year.
The second term.
Right.
I mean, not the second term, but the the last year of their term.
Right, so they
Second year.
Is your record that they stay on there for the second year without a child in the system?
Yes, because you you really, you're not having that continuity and they can still add value.
Okay, I see what you mean. So you're, okay, so, okay, okay, I understand.
Right, it's very different in a parent who does not have, I mean, an individual who doesn't have a child in the school system, period.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So, yes, however, I and I'm in alignment for the twelfth grade. I'm in alignment to say, yes, they can absolutely be on there for the year that they're there. And then I think that when their term is up, just so we don't get into any funny business, when their term is up, then I think that we then they're up as well. But I do think that there is value in some type of um um like input from them, but they can, they're not going to be on the council. So that's, I know, I know we see differently on that one point, but I do believe that if we, if we um intentionally say twelfth grade is a must and we need those parents, we don't want to push them out. That's what I think you're saying. Is that the way our policy reads right now, they wouldn't be able to get on. What I'm saying is, I think that we can take twelfth grade parents, if they're the best fit based on a superintendent or wherever we go with that piece right there, they can come in, but they need to know upfront. When we say yes, it's not that you can't be on it. We welcome you because we need your input. But then after that initial year, when you no longer have children in the system, you too, for us to be in compliance, are not able to be on because I do Yeah, okay, good. I'm look at this high five for high five for agreement.
I can agree with that and because what also happens like right now, we are we are asked to be a part of other focus groups and committees.
Yes.
And so that doesn't mean that that individual will no longer be a part of that external committee, right? And so that doesn't mean that that individual will no longer be a part of that external committee, right? They just won't have a voting seat on the P C A C.
Precisely, thank you. That's where I'm going. I want to be compliant all the way around.
As long as the voice is still being able to be heard in the system somehow.
Yep.
Right, I can agree with that.
Okay, so then Ms. Welsh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, well, and I, and I, and your, your point is, we'll take in Vice Chair Walker, the um, and, and if you want to give the final thought to wrap it up. Um, and then we.
Yeah, super final thought. My recove inside of the language would be, um, if a twelfth grade parents can apply, um, twelfth grade parents are welcome to apply, however their term ends when um, when their child is no longer a member of, I mean, of the PG C P S school system. Um, and then that will then trigger our next steps. I think that's amazing. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, pressure. Um, Ms. Welsh, I want to just turn to you really quickly, if you had any additional insights before we go to Ms. Britten Millhouse for um, another round.
The only thing is, um, so, so, uh, no, okay, no, not right now, I don't. I mean, I think as right now, it sounds like, I mean, you have, don't have a vote yet, but uh, it sounds like we're saying the twelfth grade parent would be, have a one-year term, basically.
All right, uh, Ms. Britt Millhouse.
Yes, um, so the, we back to the board and the definition of that, you will get clarification on that, that my question, that's my question. What is the definition for the board? Like, how is that gonna be determined?
The, are you talking about the, the recommendation?
No, the, the, the part which talks about the meeting that we're meeting with the superintendent, the recommendations.
That's fate, the committee needs to vote on that, if they want a full board or they just want board leadership.
Right, and my recommendation would be full board for the initial meeting. Because what happens is, you know, we're, we're, we're looking to recommend the board as a whole. But then you also have the representatives who support their districts, right? And so right now, what we don't have is a cohesive, uh, there's no cohesive understanding with the board and how to really work with the P C A C collectively. And so right now, we are really working in our districts, but aligning what we're doing with the strategic plan. And so when you have that initial meeting with the group that's advising you, then that creates some cohesiveness of what you're asking us to do, and then what we may also do on a district level.
So it sounds like, uh, what I hear, uh, Ms. Britten Millhouse saying is maybe in, in you just, you're adding in full board. Yeah, to that language, and it's just very clear, um, who they're meeting with at the beginning of the year. Um, so I do want to recognize that we have Vice Chair, I'm sorry, uh, Chair, uh, uh, Walter Fields, who is here. Um, and I'm happy to turn it over to you, but I also want to give you an update of where we are. So we're at four point six in the agenda. We are just at um, discussion and comments for um, the, I'm sorry, not four point six, we're at four point four. P C A C policy, and we're at discussion and comment. I think we're probably at our last comment, um, but we may have room for one or two more. Um, so I will turn it over to you to um, take this over.
Yes, you can, Ms. Millhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Fields, and welcome. So the other question I had was about, um, um, really the, the liaison, and so, um, Ms. Forbes, I, I heard you and understood you to say about the student board member. Uh, but I want to make sure that there's clarification, that the liaisons don't really have a voice in the P C A C meeting. They are only present to bring information to us from the board of superintendent or for us to provide um, some information to deliver back, right? And so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, um, when we are looking at that definition of liaison, that the language is clear and, um, you know, about what the liaison is, and they are not a member of the P C A C. They don't have a voting role. They really don't have a role, period, in the meeting itself. Um, and so their presence there is if help is needed or insight or information on anything. But other than that, it's very limited in the engagement, especially during the P C A C meetings.
Um, Ms. Welsh, I see your hand raised.
Yes, and I'm thinking to clarify that in the definition of liaison, I can actually put language in there, it says that the liaison does not have a uh, a voting role. They're merely there to exchange information. I can pu- to put a little bit more language in that definition.
Thank you.
Well, colleagues, if there's no uh, further discussion, uh, should we move uh, to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion?
Hey, Mr. Fields, good morning, um, evening. I think, uh, there was just a couple of I will, I wanted to vote tonight, but there was a couple of things that it seemed that we needed to discuss just to, um, make sure it's really clear in the verbiage. I think, Ms. Welsh, let me ask you, did you feel that way as well?
Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna ask before you finalized everything, okay, what about this and this?
Yeah, it's not ready for a vote quite yet. We're almost there. I think the next meeting when we discuss, then we'll, it'll be good.
Okay, so is it my sense I see, uh, Vice Chair's hand raised? Let's hear Briggs.
Actually, I was, you, when you asked the question, I was raising my hand to answer it, so let me put my hand down, sorry.
Okay, uh, so Ms. Welsh, take, please take on advisement, the recommendations made tonight on Policy fifteen hundred and bring it back to the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting for further discussion. And before we move on to item four point six, I just want to um, acknowledge my lateness to tonight's meeting. I had a late meeting in Baltimore that I could not get back in time uh, to start this meeting, so I appreciate um, our Vice Chair, um, who will um, be assuming this role soon um, as I leave the board. Um, so thank you, everyone, for their patience tonight. Uh, item four point six, Policy five one three two, portable electronic devices in the schools. I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to update us on Policy five one three two, portable electronic devices in the schools.
Cindy, will you uh, put it up for us that so we can walk through it?
This, this policy, um, is actually a policy you already have, and so I just went in and made some revisions and um, I think, um, Board Member Fields, when I went over the policy on social, students' use of social media, the conversation came up about possibly condensing these two policies and um, and that was also something I had asked a question about in the work plan. So that would certainly be easy enough to put the two together if that's what the final decision is after we get through this one. So the language on the policy language, I didn't touch that because it really still is applicable. Um, we do use, although we now, every student does have their own device that the school system provides, there are situations where students are allowed to use their portable electronic devices, their mobile phones uh, for instructional purposes, so we don't want to eliminate that. So that certainly is uh, included into the um, into the policy. And so the purpose of the policy is to recognize the value of allowing students to use their portable electronic devices, uh, but also to hold them accountable for in- inappropriate use. Um, and uh, in accordance with student rights and responsibility handbook. So if you uh, proceed down to the, through the policy, Cindy. I did put in cyber bullying, because that is, that is definitely one of the inappropriate uses of your mobile devices. Um, and that language is actually a consistent language across numerous policies that we have right now. Um, and then if you scroll further down, I did provide a definition of portable electronic device. Um, and um, and then I also define school day, because we do talk about the use of it during the school day. I also define school property again, which is the same definition, actually, that was in the other policy related to social media. And then so, school-sponsored activity also included a definition there. If you could continue scrolling down, please. And now we get into standards. Um, and I, there are some minor changes. I have students are permitted to use uh, their PEDs for instructional purpose with school administrator approval. Um, they are permitted to use their, their mobile phones while moving, riding to and from school on the buses, as long as it doesn't interfere with safe operation of the school bus. Um, they also, the school principal designee may allow additional times for students to use um, their uh, mobile phones at s- at schools and approve it, prove designated areas, if you can scroll down further. And then prohibited uses. Um, so anything that would, um, that is, um, considered an invasion of uh, privacy of another person, especially in terms of like recording something that someone was saying or taking a picture of them or a video and sharing that, and especially in locker rooms and bathrooms, that they absolutely, mobile devices should not be used in locker rooms and and bathrooms at any time. And then if you proceed down further, um, and then it's, um, basically all the previous language, it talks about taking videos, sharing photos. Um, that was all previously there before, but I did add, uh, my clarified, can you scroll up just one second, please? Um, just a tad up. So unauthorized or unlawful sharing of electronic posting of images taken or stored in PEDs during the school day. And that's why I had the definition in as the school day. And then I did add language using a PD in a manner that would be illegal, using PD in a manner that would be seen as compromising academic integrity, say someone took a picture of other, another student's answers to a, a test or something, I don't know, and they use that information. Um, unintended use of borrowed device, if you scroll down a little bit, please. Uh, like using a, a, someone's phone, um, to text or make calls under the guise of the, the actual owners. Um, and it goes the owner, but it's not the owner. And of course, any of these violations that are, would, any of these things could be reflected, um, would be reflected as violations in the Code of Student Conduct. And then if you proceed further, um, and it's, and this again is language that was there before, like if, if in fact a, a mobile device is not permitted, um, they, uh, for use, the actual use, then it must be turned off or on silent mode and stored in a backpack and not, uh, in view when they, when it's a time when the student is not allowed to use, um, uh, the mobile device. Um, and there are times when as a teacher might, or it could be administrator too, or, but would request the students to turn off or put away their, their mobile device, that's, that's then required, they must do that. And if they don't, then again, that would could result in disciplinary action. Um, and, and then the last one is no student should use or access a network or wifi in an unauthorized manner. So that's, that's just basic, um, security of getting in the network and then, you know, possibly grabbing information or whatever. And then if you move forward, waiver of liability, the school system does not take any kind of responsibility if a student ends up um, uh, first of all, losing their, their mobile device, um, um, or damages it. Um, so that's, it's the responsibility of the student who brought it. And then any of the, the, the devices that we provide, um, they, uh, the, the rule is that the student must follow your policy on uh, information technology acceptable use guidelines, as well as the administrative procedure that addresses the same thing. Um, and the other thing is, if a student, if, if a student does break or damage a um, one of those PG V S issued PEDs, uh, they should report that immediately, or it's just not working. They should report it to the to the, you know, the school, uh, someone in authority in the school, and if you scroll down a little bit further. And then, uh, and explain what the damage is, and then it just says that the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures to implement this policy. And I will say that if you look at the references for related policies and procedures in, um, the other one that we looked at, use of, uh, social media, student use of social media, they're basically the same ones, because they really do overlap. Um, so if in fact you wanted to incorporate the social media in with the portable electronic devices, that it would not be that difficult. So it's really your call as a committee on how you would like to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Uh, the floor is now open for discussion and comments, Alex. Well, since I see no hand, oh, I do see, uh, Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, so I just wanted to say, now that we're on cell phones, and we talked about social media earlier. And I know that we're, a lot of these things are connected, social media, cell phones, mental health, um, and students' mental health, and there's a big, a number of priorities right now. Um, I know that so I had, I recently had a discussion with like a school administrator that actually implemented a no cellphone policy, but they're really, um, they're being really strict about it. And so they are enforcing it and policing it in the schools. And they're like, if they see a student, any teacher, go, if you go into any classrooms, um, phones are actually in the backpacks. And students, when they're in their rec area, or when they're kind of playing around in the hallway, they, they're, they're um, called out by staff for not having it. So I think that something I would like to maybe see, I'm not sure if this is right for the cellphone policy, or if it's right for the social media policy, or maybe for a different policy, is a tracking of I don't know, a part of the clo- the Culture and Climate Survey, wh- what's the impact of cellphone use? Like, is there some way for us to start to, as we're thinking about our mental health strategy, to think about how we can track information? And I had this really great conversation with the administrator I was telling you about. And they said, like, you know, when we enforce this policy, um, students were saying things like, I have more time, or teachers are like, we have more, we have ten minutes more instructional time. Um, and by the end of the week, that's like, uh, you know, fifty minutes additional instructional time to reteach, to go back over content. Um, you know, teachers that have mentioned that they feel like they're competing with, you know, students, or there's less behavior incidents, because there aren't bullying, bullying incidents that are happening on social media, which we know are, are, is happening. Um, so I would like to maybe figure out how we can maybe even, if it's not a kind of a standard operating procedure in schools, where it's like, this is the cellphone policy, and this is what we do, and this is how we kind of enforce it. Then if there's some way to just get folks thinking about it in the survey that we have around, when you use your cellphone, how do you, you know, how do you, I don't know. So, Ms. Welsh, I'm not sure if you have any ideas um, there, or what that language could look like, um, or if this is even the right policy for it, if there's another one.
I, I don't know that this is a, um, I mean, I guess you could put language in something that would say, um, gathering information or, uh, surveying uh, for, for the future to identify what the impact of the, of the, um, cellphone used in, in schools are. For, are, are you saying for students and for staff, or just for students?
Right now, I want to start with students. So I think this would be more, you know, but I guess for staff, it could be in your classroom, what is happening, you know, is cellphone is, are you competing with cellphones? Um, you know, in this, the attention of students, um, how often are you enforcing the policy? Like, just some way for us to kind of gauge. And then I think really support the superintendent, you know, in, not necessarily enforcement, but kind of really making sure that students aren't using their cell in schools if possible. When, unless, when appropriate.
Right, there, I mean, I could certainly add that language. I, I need to, um, I guess it's probably if, it's under a division of accountability that actually really, uh, sends out that survey. And I do think Hannover Research had, has been in a lot of our surveys, but I can't, I would assume that there would be quite easy to put some questions together that, um, you know, would meet the criteria for trying to get reliable information uh, related to cell phones. I will say this, this is just a little aside, I was listening to a tape on good health and stress. And they talked about picking your cellphone and trying to get your emails all the time and everything from the cellphone and doing it, and that is actually causes stress. It versus if you say, like, oh, I'm only going to look at this, at this time period, and then you're not being, it's like you're not being pulled in all these directions trying to coordinate your cellphone, pick up emails, at the same time, do whatever it is you're doing at the moment. So I think it's, it's an interesting topic.
And, and there is a, there is a lot of scholarly research on social media use and cellphone use that we can also look at. Okay, so, um, is that all, uh, Vice Chair?
That is it, yes, thank you.
Okay, I, I'm gonna recognize, uh, Dr. Zaporin Miller.
Thank you so much. I just want some clarification. If you said it, please pardon me. Does this policy prohibit students from the use of cell phones, period, in school? Okay.
No.
Okay. So it's just managing the use and not, so if a teacher is able to allow them to use it for instructional purposes with guidance, not just free for all, it does permit for the user. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
All this policy does is really set the standards for the use of portable electronic devices. Um, and I will say that I think part of what we might want to contemplate also is some language, because we talk about while on the school bus. But a lot can occur when students are waiting for the school bus. And, and I see it when I drive through my complex, where you have groups of students waiting for the bus, and they have their devices. So I think somewhere we need to stress that, um, it's the expectation of the school district that students will it's the expectation of the school district that students will adhere to these standards. Um, even en route to school, because a lot can happen. When students are just gathered, waiting for the bus or walk or walking to school, those devices are out, people are using them. And so everything that we outline in this policy about possible harassment, that can take place before a student even steps on a bus. Um, and so I don't know how we do that, because I don't know, you know, we can't police activity uh, when they're not formally uh, within the school building or on the bus. But I think we do need to encourage the adherence to these policies um, for students um, when they start the school day. And so so your hand, Ms. Welsh, and then I'm gonna recognize our student board member, uh, Ms. Rivera Forbes.
So I do want to say there is under uh, the prohibited uses of the of um, portable electronic devices. It does say using them while getting on or off the school bus. So I think that contemplated, you know, if you're staying around on a bus. You know, at a bus stop, waiting to catch the bus or whatever. And it does say that, but the, when you are on the bus, you can use it, but you must use it in a safe manner. Which of course implies that you're not gonna be taking pictures of kids, sending them around, you know, sending nasty notes to each other, things like that. That of especially with students on the bus, that would cause a disruption on the bus.
Okay. Uh, board member Rivera Forbes.
Okay, um, thank you for recognizing me, Chair. I definitely agree with the importance of ensuring that student safety is prioritized, especially with our ongoing um, high rate of cyberbullying. However, I would still say students do need that downtime. And one of the biggest moments of downtime is on the bus in the morning and waiting to get on the bus. And I can say for myself as a student, I'm usually listening to music, maybe talking to my friends before I have to get into that school mindset of just focus, focus on work. So I would say to still let students have their freedom in that aspect, especially since it's their only time to really be on their devices.
Thank you. And and I don't think it's not prohibiting them from using the devices, just trying again to set the standards to make sure that the devices aren't used in a way um, that would, you know, um, cause any harm to students. So if you're on the bus, using it for music, that that's fine. It's just this notion of using it in a way that could cause some harm, whether it's through harassment or or bullying. Uh, Ms. Welsh, I still see your hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I was gonna take it down, but I I do want to ask the question based on um, um, the the student board member's response is that she's saying though she like likes to listen to that music as she's waiting for the bus to come, which could be a long time. The times for, uh, for, because of our buses. So so we have right now in the policy, it says using it's prohibited use to use the P D while getting on or off the school bus, which I'm assuming that implies as you're waiting at the bus stop. Uh, do, do we want to clarify that language a little bit? Um, I don't know.
I think we need to. Um, you know, I think this student board member has raised a, a very valid point that, you know, for some students, that might be a time when they have an opportunity to listen to music to to get, you know, in the right mindset for the school day, and I would hate to prohibit that. Um, so again, I think, I think it falls under the category of appropriate use. And we may, we may want to say that as long as you have, um, you know, earbuds or uh, headphones, that an appropriate use is, you know, you can listen to music. We don't want, you know, phones blasting on a bus. So I think we do also have to condition the use to say you have to have, you know, um, earbuds or headphones. Dr. Miller, I see your hand raised.
The first point I was gonna make, uh, you have cleared up in terms of using it on, at the bus stop or on the bus. But I just want clarity from Ms. Welch. I think that okay, um, can you clarify if the student code of conduct applies to students? Or our policies applies to students while at the bus stop, namely if an altercation occurs when they're at the bus, or at the bus stop. Disciplinary action is taken um, as if they were in school. So that being said, I would think that covers if a student use, uses their cellphone inappropriately, be it social media, enticing a fight, whatever it is at the bus stop or on the bus. They still would be subject to disciplinary action. And um, I'm not sure if I asked the correct question, but I'm just trying to find out if that covers if something occurs. And the administration is able to see evidence that this occurred based upon something when they were at the bus stop or, you know, or on the bus.
So I'm gonna need to look that up for you. I think it does, but I don't want to say that without having the chance to go look in the student rights and responsibility handbook to be sure. But I can, I can bring that back.
Hey, uh, we do have Mr. Whitley on, is perhaps he may be able to add something to that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I will say is I know that we've had student appeals where actions have taken place at bus stops. And there was discipline that was uh, handed out. Um, so I I would not um, stop Ms. Welsh from doing further research, but I can say that we've had student appeals where uh, these situations have occurred.
Thank you. Any more discussion colleagues? If not, should we move uh, on, move this to um, move to action as policy or keep it for further discussion?
Um, I think, oh, Ms. Welsh.
I just wanted to ask one question. So are we gonna keep the two policies separate, or do you want to combine them between social media and portable electronic devices?
If if we're, if we're gonna move this for further discussion, I'd like to see um, it merged.
I think we should. Yeah, I think we should move for further discussion as one of the members on the Board, Policy Governance Committee.
Okay, Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement recommendations made tonight by the Committee on Policy five one three two. And let's bring this back to the next policy and governance committee meeting for further action.
Okay.
Moving along to, I'm sorry, did I hear someone?
I just said, okay.
Okay.
An idea come off really quickly. And so, um, sorry, this is lovely to Walker. Um, can I be recognized?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, when it comes back, it will be merged. Is that what we're saying for direction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item four point seven on the agenda, policy ninety two fifty attorneys. Um, I'll yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh uh, to introduce her guest speakers and provide an update on policy ninety two fifty attorneys.
So, um, at the last meeting, I think we had gotten through most of the policy, except we got to this one section that had to do with when the um, board member was a plaintiff. And and at that point, um, uh, do you want, yes, thanks, Cindy, if you'll scroll down to the bottom. As it's right near the very end of the policy. Uh, that's the only change, was it just this one piece? Keep sliding, see, keep scrolling down, please. Keep going. You'll see it, it's highlighted. Right there. So I, previously, as I think it said, that the board would not pay for a um, a board member who is a plaintiff in litigation. And then I think at the end, um, um, Mr. Whitley had suggested that we say typically, because there are sometimes situations where in your, in the effort to defend yourself. Um, you might file a counterclaim because that's the appropriate thing to do, uh, because you're defending yourself. It wouldn't be that you're initiating a claim, but it's really just uh, how to, and that is how, how to respond appropriately to fully defend yourself. So um, instead of putting the word typically in there to really clarify it so that it's not, it's not um, nebulous and people can't take advantage of, you know, being the plaintiff. Um, this is the language that uh, incorporated in there uh, with the help of Office of General Counsel. And it says, the board will not pay the fees or expenses for an attorney for any board member who is the plaintiff in litigation unless the board member was first a defendant in the litigation, met the criteria for payment, and that is acting within the scope of the member's authority. And without mouse and gross negligence. And then in order to defend themselves, they had to go on the offensive and file a counterclaim. So they would not be your typical plaintiff initiating any type of um, a claim against uh, us, another person, another board member, whatever. But they would be needing to do that because of that's, that's really, and of course, action they have in order to defend themselves. And Dennis, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, please do.
Yeah, the um, only uh, change I would make to the addition um, is counterclaim has a specific uh, definition in the law. I would just say, and had to file a claim.
Okay.
As it, it could be a counterclaim, it could be a third party claim, it could be a declaratory judgment.
Okay.
Okay. The floor is now open for discussion and comments on policy ninety two fifty. I see uh, board member Walker.
Yes, I just wanted to, let me um, turn on my camera. Hey, thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, once again for um, for that and your work with everyone else who helped you with that. I just wanted to just say that I'm in alignment with the policy as it's written now. It's very clear. Um, and and um, aligns to uh, just a a additional clarity that we just, that we talked about previously. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will say I I appreciate the revision on this policy. And for the public's um, edification. I think that what we're trying to do, of course, we never want to be in a situation where um, counsel has to be hired. But given the nature of uh, this business, uh, these things do happen. And if you serve on the board, you want to make sure that anyone who serves on the board feels as though that they have proper legal counsel. If they become um, a defendant first um, in an action while executing their responsibilities as a board member. Because it would become very difficult uh, to get people to assume these roles if they felt that they were exposed legally uh, when they uh, are involved in litigation. So this is a necessary step that protects the integrity of the board. And make sure that when you have private citizens serving in these capacities as board members, they feel as though they have some protection uh, from legal exposure. So I just wanted to say that and put that on the record, because I know there's been a lot of confusion about the payment of legal fees and whose fee should be covered, um, and who shouldn't. And I think the bottom line is that we want to make sure if you are executing your responsibilities as a member of the board. Um, and that it it falls within the conditions that the policy sets, that you will um, have some um, legal protection. So colleagues, uh, should we move this to action um, or keep it for further discussion?
Let's move to action.
Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy ninety two fifty. And uh, let's move this to action. Next on the agenda is policy four point eight by law ninety two seventy one. Student board member, I yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to introduce um, the guest speakers, if she has guest speakers.
I don't have any guest speakers.
Okay, we'll just update us on policy ninety two seventy one.
So Cindy, would you put uh, put up the policy, please? The bio, I guess. So if you go, if you scroll down, please. So I have this highlighted, because if you recall at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that um, instead of getting, having the option to get a social study credit, the idea of having a dual enrollment credit. So I have contacted um, under academics, our office that deals with dual enrollment. And they are in the process, they have um, contacted Prince George's County, uh, the community college to see if that would be something that could be worked out. So I have not heard back from them yet, but so that's why I have it highlighted, because I didn't want to lose that. But um, then what they did share is that it's really probably will be up to the college to to uh, try to convince them to go ahead and do that. So um, but they are gonna advocate for it, they thought it was a good idea. So um, as soon as I know, then I can share that information. And then if you can scroll down, Cindy. I see whatever. Okay, this one. So when, so when um, um, Alvera brought up at the last meeting about the actual campaign funds and putting it into the, putting it into administrative procedure. Because the policy does call for an administrative procedure. I think that's fine, but I actually think it's probably very appropriate to also include it in this policy that says specifically that the the, for, but the two candidates that are gonna be running in the general election that there will be equal campaign funds for those, for those two uh, student board members. So that way. And also, it talks about educating the secondary students, a uh, grade six through twelve uh, on the voting process, which I think then the procedure can go into more detail about what that would entail. But I think it's important to incorporate that into the policy. So I did, I did put that back in there. And then if you can scroll down a little bit further. Think. Um, okay, uh, so there was uh, language about, a conversation about also uh, covering the um, expenses for transporting the student board member to board activities, whether it's the board member can drive themselves and they're, they are, you know, incurring gas mileage, because they're, you know, gas costs, because of their mileage to making it to board activities. Or if they're a parent or someone has to transport them. So I did incorporate that language at um, uh, along with the, going on the trip, first of all, on any of the conferences, so that that cost would be covered. But then also I included, the student board member shall receive local mileage based reimbursement for the use of personal vehicle in accordance with the policies and reimbursement rates established by the school system employees. Established for a school system employees as well as reimbursement for actual costs of items such as parking tolls, et cetera. And that comes right out of the um, the bylaws that actually talk about those kinds of expenses for board members in general. So it picks up those same expenses for the student board member. And then the next one has to do with college um, scholarships. And so when going back and listening to the tape, uh, I know there was language about, well, the county does that. The county is responsible for the scholarship or whatever, but then I think there's sort of consensus that really the boarding, um, the board should really be responsible. But I did say the board in collaboration with the student, student, with the superintendent shall, okay, a col- college scholarship for the student board member, because that would really be part of the budget process that they would, you know, have to incorporate into the budget. So um, and then I, I didn't know, I didn't know how much you wanted, because I don't think we had that conversation as well as I didn't know if there were any criteria conditions for the scholarship, if that was something you wanted to incorporate or not. So that's the only reason why I put question marks there, just in case you, you wanted to keep it general, or you wanted to add some information. And then I keep going, Cindy, to see if there's anything more. And that's it.
Well, I think um, in terms of the scholarship qualifications, I think something as simple as in good standing. You know, because, because of course, you know, they have to maintain uh, their GPA. Um, and I think as long as we had language that said in good standing, that would um, reflect um, the qualification. Um, I'm going to uh, go to our, our student member of the board first. She doesn't have her hand raised, but I just want to recognize her in case she had any specific concerns um, around this policy or anything that she feels that we uh, have missed.
Thank you, Chair Fields. Um, I want to thank you again, Ms. Welsh. Um, I actually love the details that was added in there, especially with the general election, because there were a few questions about whether it was all. a few questions about whether it was all secondary school students. And I know there was also a concern that it would um that students in schools that had elementary school as well would not be able to vote. But now it's clarified that it is since all in grades six through twelve. So I think that's definitely very important, um along with the add-on and just reimbursements. It's really clarifying um the role of the student member of the board and how it will look. So I do want to thank you for those updates and also in the student member of the board rights as well. Uh scholarship wise, I still do not know how that process works. Um but I would love to hear from my seasoned colleagues on if they know exactly how it's supposed to operate.
Thank you. Uh and I do not know how it operates. If there's any other committee member that might be able to uh enlighten um our student member of the board and the chair, either, you know, I appreciate it.
I do not. However, I think it's a great question for us to ask the board when we're back together.
I see uh Dr. Zaporin Miller's hand is raised.
Thank you so much. Um again, I just wanna thank you, Ms. Welch, and I appreciate you um looking into the dual enrollment. And I I'm pretty sure that it's gonna come through and it'd be great for the uh student board members to start receiving. Hopefully, this can be voted on this year. So our current student board member can take advantage of their first few college credits um before they go on to college. Um I wanted some clarification on the reimbursements. Um one of the paragraphs says board activities, and I just wanted to make sure that if the student is being transported to and from a board meeting, that that would be included in the board activities. Uh I do, I did see on the second paragraph where you said that if the student is transporting themselves, they would have a mileage reimbursement. But I was wondering whether we are able to cover if the student is being transported back and forth that whoever's transported that them, does the mileage reimbursement go to the student or does it go to the person who's being transported? Somehow, I I'm trying to figure out how to make them whole, one way or the other.
So so my intention, and I'm certainly open to language changes, is that that for the first one where it says reimbursement for travel and other expenses related to transporting a student board member to board activities and accompanying the student student board member on out of town conferences. Um I was trying to pick up the fact that they would definitely, there might be uh transportation costs for the person accompany the student as well as they might be, they might also be required to just transport the student to but uh student board acti- to board activities. So either one, whether they're going to conferences or out of town conferences, or they're just going to regular school uh student board activities or student, ah get the word student, board activities that they that would cost would be covered with the proper appropriate documentation, which would be similar to what employees must, you know, when we're and probably US board members have to submit, and it would fall under like the IRS uh standards for how much you get uh per mile. And then the other one is that if the student board member is transporting themselves, I could change that language actually to say for the first number three, to just pick up the transportation to the out town conference for the person tra- for the person accompanying the student board member. But then include under number four, the basics, just local mileage would be for either the student board member or the person that has to do the tra- if the board, if the student board members transporting themselves for the board member, student board member, or for the person transporting the student board member.
So I was gonna a- a- actually ask uh board council to assist us with this one because I like the way you separated them. So the first one speaks to chaperoning out of town and then activities in or out of town. But just to be clear on, if we're reimbursing for mileage because it's local travel, who are we reimbursing? Are we uh because someone needs to be reimbursed. Are we reimbursing the student? Or are we reimbursing the parent or guardian who's transporting them? Am I making sense? On the first one. So I like them separated because the first one says, hey, this is because you either it's a chaperone or someone is transporting you. The second one speaks to you're driving yourself and this is how you'll be reimbursed.
I I hear you, Dr. Uh uh Miller, and I and I think we can, we can clarify that in that first sentence. Right? Whether or not it is the student board member themselves or if it's a chaperone, some an adult who has to that that person would be reimbursed. Am I, am I making myself clear, Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Okay.
So um it would be, okay, that that makes sense. So that one way or the other.
They get, they get reimbursed.
Be made whole, yeah.
Right.
It would be a decision made by the student board member or their or their parent or their chaperone.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues?
Oh, yes. Can I add? I'm sorry, my five minute, I've thirty four seconds. So for the dual enrollment, if Prince George's Community College is asking us to, is asking them to pay tuition in order to get the dual enrollment, I'd like to ensure that we are covering it like we do for other students who get dual enrollment. Does that make sense? So the student does not have to pay the tuition to get the credits.
Okay.
Well, I think if, I think if that's our policy, then it would just fall under our policy, our existing policy.
I don't know whether it's a policy or a practice. That's why I wanted to ensure that yeah, for the student board member that the cost for the dual enrollment is covered for Prince George or whatever, the local college or university.
We do have an AP that addresses that, so I will look at into that to see what it says.
Okay, thanks.
And I and I certainly want this addressed because I I'm looking forward to perhaps welcoming our current student member of the board onto my campus uh next year um as a student. So, you know, I I wanna make sure we get this right.
Thank you. Um I actually do have one question. Just to make sure I'm following Ms. Welch, when it comes down to the reimbursements, it would go to the student board member, right? And then it would be uh up to the student board member and the student board member's guardian to designate those reimbursements according to their will. I'm just making sure that's still, because I didn't know if we were somehow getting lost in translation where it would go to let's say someone who was taking the student member of the board to a meeting. I think that might cause a bit of chaos.
So I do think I I was just gonna say for the chaperone piece, I think that whoever the adult is that's cha- that's chaperoning the student board member and also transporting the student board member. All of those reimbursements would go to that person because they're the ones that are gonna have to submit all the documentation to support that. Now, as far as the actual just driving around to different activities within Prince George's County um for all the different, you know, school board types of activities you do. Certainly, if the board, if the, if you as the student member are driving, then you're gonna get reimbursed. But I don't know what to say. I'm thinking there might be some requirement that it would actually have to go to the person reimbursing, but uh maybe Dennis can um uh for give us information about that. As I, because the system really does have to be clear about what they're so normally, like, there's a mileage form that you complete, the the board, the employees complete, that actually gives the mileage and what you'd be going to, like you know, you'd put down, I don't know, ten miles to go to such and such a school because there was, you know, whatever it is. Um and that would be required by um by well, I guess whoever's doing the transporting, but I don't know if there's the possibility that even though let's say your parent is transporting you, that that would go to you, because I'm thinking it would have to be the parent who would, whoever did it. But if you're saying your concern is if you have numerous people transporting you, how does that all get added up if you might have, they might have to smick a bunch of different forms?
I I do see that as an issue, and I know um just for the past recent years, it's always been directly to the student board member. Um just as it would any other board member, and then they divide up those reimbursements according to their situation. Um instead of someone having to fill out all those forms. So that that was my only concern there. And I'm just wondering, there's so many different types of scenarios and situations you could be in. And especially when it comes to giving funds to another person and their support towards the student board member.
And I would have to have the committee um make a decision or rely on board councils, give them guidance.
Yeah. And and I I'm also thinking, does it have to be someone within the BGCPS system to submit a form? It could not be an outside party. So I would think that the the student board member would submit the form with the appropriate documentation. And then perhaps specify, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head how it's, how I've done it in another organization. Should specify who the payee is. Because I don't think an outside party could submit a form into our system.
You're right. I don't think they could either, now that I think about it.
And if they're not a vendor with the county even cut a check, with the school system even cut a check to our outside pay. So I think it would happen the student without knowing, you know, all the inner workings of the administration.
That's true.
So I think we're, we might be creating a a problem where there isn't one.
Okay.
Dr. Miller, I see your hand raised again.
I think board council answered it because I was, I was going back and forth, and this is getting in the weeds. You know, when you transport a student, so if the student has been transported by the parental guardian do they need it for tax purposes? Because you know how if you are reimbursed for your mileage, you can't write that mileage off. Does that make sense? So how how does the student document so and so transported me on this day? And maybe it's going in the weeds and that's not something that we need to worry about. So I guess I'm leaning on Dennis to help on this one.
I see that the student has her hand up. I'll let her speak and I'll give my 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 opinion, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
Thank you. I'll be very, very brief. I'll just say, um just as it was kind of mentioned earlier, this is something that's not broken, and I don't think we need to fix it in the way that it is. Just in terms of right now, I could see it creating a lot of problems. In the past recent years, I don't think we've heard of any situation where reimbursement has not been given um the way it should have been. And I know that every single person's situation is differently. I won't put my personal information out there, but I know my current current, I guess you would say, way I am doing my own process is different than probably how other student member of the boards would do it. But at the end of the day, it still works out the way it should. So I think that it should stay the way it is because it gives the student member of the board their rights as a board member. And it also keeps their guardian involved in the process because before the student member of the board can do anything, their guardian does have to be involved. I will make that very clear. But I think with the route we're going, there is a possibility that, yes, you would have to fill out a ton of forms because there may be some student member of the boards that have to be driven by somebody different every other week, and we don't know those situations. So that's my um perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley?
I don't believe I could have said it any better. Um if um Dr. Zaporin Miller's questions answered, I'll just rest on the student board members' answer.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further discussions, colleagues, I'll ask, should we move this to action on this policy or keep it for further discussion?
The um board member feels, I'm thinking maybe we should at least give it one more time to see by that point if I have the information about the dual enrollment.
Agree.
And and the other thing is, do we have an amount that you wanna put in a scholarship or does that fluctuate or how does that work?
I think that's something we need to contemplate between meetings and perhaps we can have some discussions. Um I can reach out to members of the committee and just get their input.
Okay.
Um and and we'll see what we come up with. So I'm gonna take this, yes.
Sorry, I know previously that the uh former student member uh gave some insight on the process as well. So when you're deliberating, just you may wanna try to remember uh what the former student member said.
Absolutely. Okay, so we're bringing this back for um further discussion at our next Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Uh we're gonna go to on to item five point zero. Items for review or action. Tonight, there are two items for review or action. The first um under agenda, item five point one is policy zero one zero five, parent, family and community involvement. Um colleagues may have a motion to move forward the new policy zero one zero five, parent, family and community involvement to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
Move to move forward uh the new policy zero one zero, sorry. Uh yeah, policy zero one zero five, parent, family and community involvement uh to the full board for recommendation to seek public comment.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh to give us an overview of the new policy.
So this policy is is a revision of the previous policy and it um um goes into, it addresses um several standards in terms of what we consider uh is affected parent, family and community involvement. And one has to do with effective uh school, family, community collabor- collaboration. The next one is two-way communication between parents, families and the school systems that we're moving back and forth. It's sec- in terms of the communication, building capacity is the third one, which has to do with not only building capacity of our own staff to be better at communicating with parents and families, but also building capacity within our parents and families to so that they feel comfortable and feel well-equipped to be able to come and ask questions, then find, you know, to find out how their students are doing or what's happening in the school. And then equity ha- and that has to do with treating every parent the same and and fairly regardless of race, color, nationality, we, you know, all the different protected classes. Um and then the next one has to do is decision ma- making, which has to do with also not just in terms of getting, you know, sharing information with parents about their own students uh progress and everything and achievement, but also to include parents and families and the community in in this decisions that either schools, individual schools or the school system itself makes um so that they have a voice in the decision-making process for the school system. And then finally, parent and family responsibilities, things like making sure you have your your child comes to school. You know, the basics that we need parents to do with their students. So that is the basic of um policy. I do do, you, one of the things you had requested board member uh fields had to do with uh uh info about providing parents of incarcerated um but parents who are incarcerated, information about their child's progress in school. So I did contact the uh Prince George's County Police and um was able to speak with the person, um and I can't even remember his name now, but he has to do with um the uh ensuring like pa- like not working with students who are incarcerated, but actually working with parents who are incarcerated. And they were, and he and one of his staff member were deliriously happy and thought it was a wonderful idea and said that um we could, we do have an AP that we have to work on that will make revisions to that we can come up with a system that would, he gave some very good advice in terms of like um like uh the, it has to do with um the um not jail locator, but whatever, when the person's been incarcerated, there's no guarantee they're in that one facility, they might be in totally different, but there is like a locator system that they would give us the information so you could access that. And then you could work through with the, with the, with the um the prison, like what um the ability then to have communications set up so that you could be informing the parent. They thought it was excellent idea so that when like say the students come, their stu- their their child, like say, comes to visit for visitation or something, then the parent has that information about how their child's doing, and they can at least have some conversation that, you know, is the parents in- involved in the child's education. So I think they're very willing to work with us on this.
Thank you. I I I really appreciate that. Um colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding policy zero one zero five to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, uh the motion passes, the policy will be moved to the full board with recommendation to seek public comment. Moving on to item five point two, policy zero one one seven, information technology services, information security. Colleagues may have a motion to forward revised policy zero one one seven, information technology services, information security to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
Move to forward uh revised policy zero one one seven, information technology services, information security to the full board for recommendation to seek public comment.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. There's been properly moved and seconded. I'll now yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for an overview of policy zero one one seven.
So um this policy is a um uh is basically um as a re- is a revised policy and it's really to um upgrade uh all security systems that we have in place um for when it comes to information technology and safeguarding basically the um our data related to both our students and our personnel. And um, I, I will say I did make a couple of changes. I did provide a definition for information technology services because we do reference that. So I thought that was important and I. In the um, uh, terms of implementation, not only does it say that requires the superintendent to develop ministry procedures, but also a, a um. Information technology security plan. So I did define that also so that we have that information. And um, basically, I don't think I made any. Other major changes. I will say that uh, probably one of the big pieces has to do with um. Ensuring that and when you're an employee of the school system, that you're not getting rights beyond what your responsibilities require. So you're not having the ability to access any information that is unrelated to your job. And that's one of the big steps. And I will tell you that emails went out to. Like all directors and supervisors and it's due, I think on the twenty-first where we have to, for each person that we supervise. List out what, what access they may have, what they need to have to do their job. So the system is already moving in that direction to ensure that we're not. That there's restrictions on the information that the system carries for both staff and students.
Colleagues, are there any objections affording the revised policy zero one one seven? Information technology services, information security to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. Moving to items six point zero. Committee recommendations, new business governance, uh, item six point one. Policy professional development for board members. Policy professional development for board members was voted on by the full board to seek public comment. No public comment was received. Colleagues, I'd like to make a motion to forward to the full board, the new policy with a recommendation for advanced consideration as first reader. At the next Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to advance consideration as first reader. Gen item seven point zero, follow-up and next steps. Follow-up from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Next steps, the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, December nineteenth, ooh, close to Christmas, at five P M. Uh, this meeting will be virtual. Please check the PGCPS. Board webpage for more information while being naughty and nice so that Santa will visit you uh, a few days afterwards. Um, my only closing remarks tonight are that um, I really want to thank. Vice Chair for stepping in this evening um, and leading the meeting at the beginning. Um, I again want to thank Ms. Welch for all of her support. Um, and appreciate the attendance and participation of a board council, Mr. Whitley. Um, I, I want to encourage the public. Again, uh, these policies are real and they impact students. Um, and so when we open up for public comments, um, we encourage the public. Uh, to join our policy meeting so that we can hear from you. We don't want to consider policies in the abstract. We know that they're affecting your children, our students. So we would really like to hear from the public on these matters. I'm gonna recognize uh, Dr. Zapor Miller, whose hand is raised.
I apologize and thank you for recognizing me. I was trying to just ask a clarifying question because you mentioned the policy that's going up for first reader, I believe. Uh, on professional development and uh, stated there was no public comment, but we did, I don't know whether the public comment we got today. Um. Would be considered a part of the public comment because it wasn't written while it was posted on the board. So. I know you weren't in when the, the speaker came in, but I just wanted to note that someone did come today to speak on that.
Hey, well, we, we will certainly, um, it's a first reader, so we'll first certainly take a look at the comments that came in tonight uh, regarding uh, that policy. Well, everyone, I just want to thank you for a great meeting with a lot of meaningful discussions around board policies. Um, if there are no other comments, um, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourned in November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Policy and Governance Meeting. Any objections? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good and safe night. The time is now eight oh three. The meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Night, thank you.